Great, thank you so much for your patience. Good evening, I'm Jean Hairston. I'd like to welcome you to our regularly scheduled board meeting of the Jackson Public School District Board of Trustees. I'll call this meeting to order. And I would like for the student from Murrah High School who will lead our pledge, Alexandria Janay Williams, would you come forward as I introduce you? Alexandria Janay Williams is an 11th grade student at Murrah High School. She is the daughter of Pastor Thaddeus and Teresa Williams. She's been in the APAC program since the 7th grade. Alexandria enjoys reading, singing, and doing community service. She has been a Girl Scout since she was four and has been singing just as long. She also is a part of Murrah Student Council and a member of the National Honor Society. Alexandria is the president of Murrah's Healthy Teens Council and a youth ambassador for the Jackson PTA. She has achieved many awards including the Girl Scout Gold and Silver Award, a Prudential Award for Community Service, and the Girl Scout Delicates Award. Please welcome Alexandria Janay Williams as she leads us in the pledge.
Would you all please say the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Mr. Figures, Alexandria, would you come forward and accept the gift from the district? Thank you so much. Next, I'd like to introduce Kalando Chambers who will bring us words of encouragement. Kalando Chambers is the son of Hervita and Orlando Chambers. He was born in 2001 in Jackson, Mississippi, and has been a part of the Jackson Public School District since he began his education at Key Elementary. After being promoted from the 5th grade, he attended Bailey APAC Middle School, and there he received 5th highest average as a promoted class of Bailey APAC. His education with JPS ends this year at Murrah High School where he participates in numerous extracurricular activities. One such activity is a free ACT tutoring service he began his junior year to aid JPS students who needed to improve their ACT scores. Finally, at Murrah, he has received numerous awards and achievements such as Quest Bridge Prep Scholar and National Latin Exam Summa Cum Laude. Kalando has an ACT score of 35 and plans to attend Harvard University in the fall. Welcome Kalando Chambers.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
When I was asked to do this talk or speech, I was told to deliver words of encouragement. Quite honestly, I was extremely confused and I asked myself, am I encouraging the district to do something in particular, or am I encouraging the district to stay encouraged? So then I asked myself, WWBD, what would Beyonce do? So then, I had the best idea ever. I said, how about I call Beyonce? And that plan actually worked out until I recognized I didn't have her phone number. So here I am, without Beyonce, but with some words of encouragement, hopefully. I would like to begin by telling you a bit of my academic accomplishments, many of which you've heard in my bio. In 10th grade, I was announced Summa Cum Laude for National Latin Exam. In 11th grade, I was a Quest Bridge Scholar and an AP Scholar, scoring an average of four on all of my AP exams. I was also announced as a member of our Base Pair Program, a joint program with Murrah High School and the University of Mississippi Hospital. In that same year, I received a 35 on my ACT. My senior year, I was nominated for the U.S. Presidential Scholarship Award, and I have the honor of saying that I was one of six students accepted into Harvard University from Mississippi. My accomplishments have been excellent thus far, yes, but what I am about to say is not going to undermine them, rather it's going to lift them and others' accomplishments, for I come to you as a representative of all JPS students. Besides academics, JPS has students who have fantastic entertainment and art skills, whether it be vocal, theater, literature, visual, etc. Some of my classmates have given me the honor of allowing me to flip through their sketchbook, and I stare in awe and marvel at their work as their hands translated such intricate images from their mind to a simple piece of paper. I have listened to students sing and be speechless at the fact that they manipulated a simple tissue in their throat to articulate such magical sounds. I could say all that I have been fascinated by over the years, however, my time is limited. What I can say, though, is creativity mustn't be hindered in our schools because creativity is the source of critical thinking, a skill necessary in both life and the world of academia. I remember being in Open Doors, more commonly known as Gifted, in my late elementary years, and the excitement I got from participating in mind-boggling trivia and exercises. When that was taken away from me after 6th grade, I had to fill the empty class slot with yet another core class. Some excitement was, for lack of better words, taken away. Then I began to think, what about those who had never even had Open Doors? What about those who had never been encouraged to explore potential talents in areas other than the recitation of the quadratic formula? We place a lot of emphasis on academics, and rightfully so, since academics is the number one determinant of one's college mission, depending on the school in question, but do we place enough emphasis on creativity? So I encourage you to encourage others. Parents, encourage your children to find their it thing. Teachers recognize that some students' it things may not resonate within your subject. It makes your subject neither more or less unimportant or important, however. In fact, it makes it all the more challenging and diverse of a classroom. Imagine how a history teacher's lesson on the Victorian era could encourage a literary artist to master the writing styles of Oscar Wilde. Students believe in yourselves enough to know that you can accomplish your it thing, and let's encourage each other to be a loving, vibrant community of pushing people to their greatest. So I still don't know what Beyonce would do, but I know what she did. She didn't go to college. She became a billionaire and the greatest living performer of our time. The next Beyonce could be a student in one of our school buildings, so let's encourage her.
Thank you so much. Those were wonderful words of encouragement. Would you please come forward and accept the gift from us? Good luck at Harvard, I know you'll do well. We are moving on to item two. Let the record show that we do have a quorum established with four board members seated. Two board members...
Four members seated.
Thank you, five board members seated. Thank you, Dr. Luckett. We have two board members who are en route and have been delayed by travel and will not make it to the board meeting. Board, we have before us the agenda. As I ask your emotion to adopt the agenda, I would like to add item C to the superintendent's report. We'll have a presentation from another student from our JORTC program, from Jim Hill. Mr. Ruben Banks will present as well. Are there any other additions or corrections to the agenda as presented? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the addition?
So moved.
Do I hear second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the agenda stands approved with the addition of item 5C. Board, we have before us the minutes with which have been distributed by Ms. Williams. We have read the minutes. Do I hear any motions for corrections or additions? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to accept the minutes as distributed from March 19th?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we have approved, read and approved the minutes as presented. Dr. Green, please present your report.
Greetings, Dr. Hairston, board members, administrators, staff members, all of the community members and students who are assembled here, and those who will be watching us electronically. There are few announcements that I'd like to make and a couple of other issues that I'd like to address this evening. First, please join Jackson Public Schools for its Spring Parent and Family Engagement Conference. This event will be held Thursday, April 25, 2019, from 5:30 until 8:30 p.m. at Callaway High School, which is located 601 Beasley Road. The conference is free to JPS parents. Childcare and transportation will be provided, so we really want to make it as easy as possible for folks to join us and participate in this event. We held an event just before I came on to the team in October. The event was in September, and I understand that it was very well-attended, and so we definitely want to encourage as many people as possible to join us there. The deadline to preregister for that event is Friday, April 12, so that's, I believe, two Fridays from now. Pre-registration forms are available at our schools and at the JPS Enix Family Resource Center. For more information, you can visit our website, www.jackson.k12.ms.us, or call 601-960-8945. Again, we encourage everyone to please, 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 join us for the Spring Parent and Family Engagement Conference, to be held Thursday, April 25. Also want to just remind all of our parents that early registration enrollment for our schools is underway and will be held through May 31 for first-year kindergarteners, first graders, and returning JPS students. That's again for first-year kindergarteners, first graders, and for returning JPS students. Our early registration is underway. Parents and legal guardians may register the students at the schools Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays of each week. Registration hours are from 8:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m., and we've extended those hours until 6:00 p.m. on Thursdays. Again, just trying to make it as easy as possible for parents to engage with us and get their students registered. Any parents or legal guardians filing under affidavit status must do so at the Office of Enrollment Services, and please call 601-960-8852 for scheduling and registration hours or for more information. We're excited to be holding yet another job fair. Those of us who have been at the board meetings or you've been watching, you know that we've held several already this year. We're really working hard to fill all of our vacancies, all of our vacancies, of course, our teacher vacancies, but others that we have within the district. And so, this next job fair will be held April 13. It's a Saturday, April 13, from 9 until 12 p.m., 9 a.m. until 12 p.m. That's at Cardozo Middle School, it's located 3180 McDowell Road Extension. We're seeking applicants for positions in teaching, food service, maintenance, and transportation. So again, we're excited to host another job fair and encourage everyone who might want to, think you might want to join the Team JPS, or you just want to come and check us out and see what we're all about, and be wooed by our amazing ability to build culture and team, come on out and join us. There is a $5,000 signing bonus for qualified teachers, so if any teachers who are interested, by all means, you can call 601-985-3159 for information, or to learn more, or even to apply online, you can visit our website at jackson.k12.ms.us/employment. The Districtwide Music Festival, Jackson Public Schools, is hosting the 42nd Annual Elementary All-City Music Festival. Forty-second annual, that's pretty awesome. At 6:30 p.m., Thursday, April 4, so just two days from now, please, please, please. We hope that everyone will join us for this. It'll be held at Cardozo Middle School, which is again located 3180 McDowell Road Extension. The event is free, 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 free. The event is free. It's themed "Be Our Guest." The festival will feature JPS 5th graders who are singing, playing instruments, and dancing. The students will also perform a readers' theater. So please come out and help us to celebrate our young people, celebrate their talents and all of the hard work that they put into developing their presentations. We want a packed house. I'll be there. I know members of the board will be there. Members, of course, Team JPS will be there. Parents, community members, join us. It'll be pretty amazing. We're excited to have our students presenting their skills. Many of you, some of you have attended or know that we've held listening sessions to talk about and to hear from members of the community about their values as it pertains to education. We're holding another listening session. This one will be held Tuesday, April 23, at the New Horizon Church International, where Bishop Ronnie Crudup is the senior, is the pastor. We'll use this time to update the public on our progress toward district transformation. We'll be sharing more about the values, the shared values, as we've come to understand them in conversations to date. We'll be sharing more about some of the priorities that we've identified and how we see that playing out in this next year, and certainly over the next five years. I will be facilitating the conversation, and we'll, again, we'll use it to further refine our best thinking about our work and the pathway going forward. So we do encourage you to join us there. And it's especially for folks in wards 5, wards 1 and 2, but anyone is welcome to join us for that meeting. Our special thanks goes to One Voice, which has released their findings from last summer's citywide survey of more than 13,000 JPS or Jackson residents to understand the perceptions and the beliefs about education opportunities. The report focuses on identifying the assets and opportunities that can be leveraged to ensure that every JPS student receives an excellent education. Many of the findings were consistent with the other research and reports that were conducted over the last 16 months, and we're excited about that. Residents indicated three of the most pressing issues in JPS to be teacher quality, district leadership, and test scores, and I think, more broadly stated, student performance. We recognize that we cannot be successful without the input and the support of our community, so we're very, we're extremely grateful to have this feedback representing a cross-section of the city, and we sincerely thank our friends at One Voice for their support in canvassing, in this canvassing effort. The full report is located on our JPS website, and again, that's jackson... Oops. I had it. Yes. All right. Next, want to talk more about our strategic planning efforts. So again, I named that and thanked One Voice for the information that they shared relative to the canvassing effort that they made. We will be, in short order, will be sharing with the board our plans to date in terms of district reorganization. We have also done quite a bit of work internally and with some external partners to continue investigating curricular materials that are being used in other districts and other districts that are really showing great gains with their students, working with our team to really, really ferret out what does it mean to provide high-quality instruction to our students. Also, working to identify the ways that we might streamline and ensure that our district organization and our district operations are most efficient and effective, and we'll share some of that today. We'll continue sharing over the next couple of months, as we've stated, but we're holding ourselves accountable for preparing this strategic plan for the next five years and being prepared to share that in time for a launch date of July 1 of this year. So, just wanted to kind of bring folks up to date as to what that's looking like. Rising Star Safety Award presentation. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Brian Johnson, who's Senior Vice President of Fisher Brown Botchral Insurance, to come forward. Oh, there he is. Mr. Johnson will be recognizing members of our team for their training and for their performance as it relates to safety, and so I'll turn it over now to Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, Dr. Green.
Good evening.
Board of Trustees, friends, colleagues. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce and present this year's Rising Safety Award. What this does, it was part of the, I want to say, three-year strategic plan that accompanies with the Risk Management Department what we had implemented to incentivize our schools in relating to performance and being safe and having less incidents. So without further ado, if these three individuals would come up, Mr. Derek Williams, Executive Director of Transportation, LaCharles Rister of North Transportation, and Janie Knott of South Transportation, if you'd please come forward and accept the Rising Safety Might I add, with the, I want to say, in cresiveness and, I want to say, performance in reference to safety to transportation, these three individuals have been really hands-on for listening, engaging with us on a risk management standpoint, and really, I do want to close by saying, I know that active shooter training was a real important topic for this legislative session. On Tuesday, April 23, Fisher Brown Botchral Insurance Agency will be conducting active shooter training for free for all employees. You are welcome to come with Jackson Public Schools. Board members are welcome. And I heard Dr. Green say earlier, free, free, free. It is free. Lunch is free, so please join us.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and kudos to our transportation professionals. We very much so appreciate their efforts to run the operation effectively, but also to keep in mind that they've got our most precious young people in their hands and ensuring their safe delivery to school and return back home. So thank you again. Let's give them another round of applause. It gives me great pleasure to showcase some of the outstanding artistry created by our talented students. We have some pieces of work on display tonight for your viewing pleasure. At this time, I'll introduce two scholars who will come forth and tell us about their amazing creative works. First, we have Brittany Bradley, a senior at Forest Hill High School. She is the daughter of Sheila Sorrels and Rufus Edwards. Ms. Bradley is the highest-ranking cadet in her school's JROTC. She is president of the Forest Hill Chapter of the National Art Honor Society, a member of the National Honor Society and the Art Club, and holds a 3.9 grade-point average. She was chosen to be on the Mississippi Museum of Art's Teen Council Board, where she helps to plan community events for the museum that are directed at teens around central Mississippi. She has received numerous Scholastic Art Awards. This year, she was chosen to receive the 2019 National Art Education Association Rising Star Award, which is given to one student in the nation...
Wow. Say it again.
One student in the nation, a JPS student, that will be going into the field of art. She received this award during spring break in Boston, Massachusetts. She has had her artwork displayed in the Mississippi Museum of Art, the Mississippi Children's Museum, the Mississippi Craftsman Guild Museum, and the Chimneyville Crafts Festival. Her work has been published in multiple national yearbooks and art magazines. Ms. Bradley's future plans include attending Mississippi College after she finishes her National Guard basic training. At Mississippi College, she will be majoring in art education. She has been awarded the MC Heritage Scholarship, ROTC Scholarship, Art Education Scholarship, and the Mississippi Art Education Association Star Scholarship. She plans on being an art teacher in JPS when she graduates college. Following Ms. Bradley, we will have Forest Hill High School senior, and you can come on up as well, Therese Bell. Therese, I'm sorry, you told me that. Therese Bell. Mr. Bell is the son of Cedric Bell and Kimberly Douglas. He loves boxing and combat sports. I better get his name right. He loves boxing and combat sports and is a member of the Forest Hill Soccer, Football, and Baseball Teams. He is also a member of the Art Club and the Forest Hill Chapter of the National Art Honor Society. Mr. Bell has received an impressive 11 Scholastic Art Awards for his drawings and photography. He also received a High Merit Award in the National Celebrating Art Competition, and his work is published in their Artist Yearbook. He was recently honored by the Chimneyville Crafts Festival and the Craftsman's Guild of Mississippi for his artwork. Currently, Mr. Bell is an AP Studio Art 2D and AP Studio Art Drawing, or is in, AP Studio Art and Studio Art Drawing. He will be submitting two portfolios to the College Board at the end of the school year for college credits. Ladies and gentlemen, I give you these amazingly talented young people.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As you have heard, my name is Brittany Bradley, and something that I did leave out that I wanted to point out, I am the Battalion Commander of Forest Hill High School ROTC Program, and I'm a Cadet Colonel. But, so, to your right is two pieces of my artwork that I would like to talk about today. My artwork aims to say that I am a female, of course, so I like to have, let females have a voice, and it's a day where men are supposed to be superior, but in my mind, I think that we are also superior in our ways that we have. The first picture at the top with the blue hair and an orange body, that is called Stitch in Your Skin. So, this piece came from one of my female models. She was a friend of mine's. She graduated, and with her, she had a unique style to her, so I decided to photograph her, and with this, I went into her hair, I embroidered it, and her hair after everything, I believed I would want to go and look at it more. But this piece is really talking about how we, as females, have natural beauty, but we hide it under makeup and wigs and everything else. But, the glow, the glow behind her shows that her beauty is being hidden right now. So, as she just looks over her shoulder, she looks back at you and says, I am a female, I can do... I can do things that I want to do. You will not dull my light." And that's how I put it. So, the next piece, it is called "Silence No More." It deals with African culture and women in African culture, Indian culture, because I researched different cultures in the area and everything, and we talked about how women are more silenced. We don't have a voice as we should have. So, I've talked to many females that has been through things, and what this portrays is each piece of my artwork, you do not have a color. Your skin is a different color from each piece. So, that means I see no color. We are the same. So, and the patterns in the background, it just shows the culture behind what we have. The scarf around her mouth shows that she will not be silenced anymore as her hands are on the scarf. The black-and-white T-shirt shows that black and white is no color. It's just something that we wear on our clothes. Her skin is telling us that we do not see color. We see people.
As you heard, my name is Therese Bell, and I'm a Forest Hill High School senior, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about my artwork. My artwork is black and white, and I like to go back in time. As you can see in this piece of artwork, it is me looking into a mirror, me with a diploma, and in the mirror, I am in shackles, and you can see a picture of a fierce Dr. Martin Luther King and Rosa Parks. And it's pretty much me looking back into the, into the past and reflecting on now and goals that I want to set for myself. And in the next picture that you can see up here posted up, it is also me behind a tree with a lantern in my hand. You can say that I'm coming into light. I was in darkness, and I was coming into light. My style of drawing is very loose. I like to show texture, and I did this with like a sharp object, and it's very loose. And, yeah, that is my style. I was influenced by my father. He was an artist. And, yeah, just trying to be successful in something, a gift God gave me, and that's all.
If you all could hold up, I think we're going to take a couple of pictures. What about the artwork in the back?
Is other students from Forest Hill?
Yeah. So, just to note, there's more artwork from other students from Forest Hill. Clearly, Forest Hill is getting some things right when it comes to their artwork. This is amazing. We'll take a couple of pictures with these young people. It's so easy to gush, gush over these young people and their accomplishments already and their young lives, and we, one of the things that I wanted to do, and as we continue to bring young people and their talents before us to display here at the board meeting, one, I want to keep grounding us in why we have these conversations, what's at the root of these conversations, these young people. But, two, want to make sure that we're highlighting so many wonderful things that are happening that don't get the news, that are not highlighted, you know, as we talk about young people in the city. And so, I'm so, so proud of you all. So powerful the way you, well, the work that you did is powerful, but the way that you talk about it and narrate what you were thinking and what was your, the impetus behind the work, thank you for that, and thank you for sharing that with us today. Appreciate it. Another round of applause for these young people. Well, remember, just one last comment that I'd like to make. We, this is the time of the year, as we move into April, we're less than two months before the end of the school year. It's a time of year where lots of folks are stressed. Lots of our young people are stressed as they are preparing for exams, and seniors, of course, as they're preparing to graduate and that. Our teachers and educators are stressing about exams and preparing young people for that. There's a lot of stress, a lot of tension that's going on right now. The weather's starting to break. Folks, many of us are sniffling and all those things, so just lots of things that are happening in folks' lives. And oftentimes, you start to see an uptick in short fuses. Sometimes, folks are a little irritable and start to make some bad choices. I just want to encourage all of our young people and all of the parents and other adults and loved ones, just to keep encouraging one another to be our best selves. I'll say it again, want to encourage all of us to encourage and support one another in being our best selves. The calls that we get about issues or concerns in our schools, want to encourage each and every one of us as Team JPS to continue to see ourselves in service to our students and families. And I pledge to our parents that this is exactly why we exist. And so, please do give our teachers and our school leaders, give them the respect that they do, but also give them an opportunity to address any concerns that you might have. If you call the superintendent's office, the superintendent will have to call the teacher or the principal, because I wasn't in the classroom. I have no idea what happened. I'm happy to support, but let's give our teachers and our school leaders and those folks in the schools an opportunity to address concerns. I'm naming this now because, again, this is that season where fuses are short and we start to see incidents, and we know we're better than the incidents that come across my desk. So, again, just a little encouragement for all of us to hang in there. We've got this. We're preparing well. We'll perform on the assessment. We'll learn from that, and we'll continue to grow and develop our skills so that in the next assessment, we'll do even better. Let's hang in there together. With that, I conclude my remarks.
Thank you so much, Dr. Green. We appreciate your bringing that insightful touch as we move forward. I do want to add that we do have one more student presentation. Our ROTC student from Jim Hill, Ruben Banks. Are you here with us? Thank you. Ruben would like to take just a minute. He is with our JROTC. I think he's the outgoing commander from Jim Hill, if I remember correctly, and he is involved in leadership position with the Federal Emergency Management Department, and he is donating, he is donating books to our district and want to, he wants to describe them for us. Thank you, Ruben.
Thank you, ma'am. Hello again. My name is Ruben Banks, and I'm the current Co-Chairman of Regions Forward National Youth Preparedness Council under the direction of FEMA. FEMA created the Youth Preparedness Council in 2012 to bring together young leaders who are interested in supporting disaster preparedness and making a difference in their communities. By completing disaster preparedness project nationally and locally, the WIPC supports FEMA's commitment to involve America's youth in preparedness-related activities. It also provides an avenue to encourage young people by taking into account their perspectives, feedback, and opinions. So, recently, I had the idea of attending Washington during the summer, and there we released a new program called Pedro the Penguin. Pedro the Penguin is designed to necessarily encounter the ideas that K-2 second graders don't encounter every day. That would be the understanding of disaster preparedness and what do you do behind disaster preparedness in your home. So, Pedro the Penguin is the result of a partnership between FEMA and the National Red Cross. It's intended to increase disaster preparedness skills among younger children. I thought about the lack of preparedness in my community and school and set a mission in order to bring with the program to Jackson, Mississippi. When I mentioned I would be asking the governmental supply warehouse to ship over 2,000 books to my house, they replied with the words "My mother never taught me to say." However, they didn't put up a fuss and just did as I requested. After experiencing so many disasters in the United States over the past 10 years, we see an increase in the thought of preparation, not only in adults, but also in youth, which is solely my job. Disaster relief is not only hurricanes, wildfires, and tornadoes, tornadoes, excuse me, but also campus security, threat prevention, and even home management. Disaster preparedness is not rocket science, but yet many attempt not to even save a dollar to the issue. Pedro the Penguin is just one step to prepare the generation for the time to come. I strongly announce this is not the only initiative that will be presented in JPS. I look forward to working with Dr. Green and Dr. Harriston on these upcoming ideas. And this is just a copy of the Pedro the Penguin book, which I will allow you all to see, but the idea is that those engaged in grades, excuse me, K through third, will have a chance to color and also read up on what exactly is disaster preparedness. And again, there are over 2,000 books. The idea that every elementary school would have enough needed. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Ruben. Thank you so much, and we appreciate your continued support, and I know that Dr. Green and his team of librarians and teachers will find the best way to use these books. And finally, we have another wonderful presentation from one of our student board representatives, Ms. Shamaya Thompson from Wingfield High School. Thank you for coming forward, Ms. Thompson.
Good evening.
The vision in Wingfield High School is soaring to new heights by creating knowledgeable leaders who have the ability to take their own decisions and rise within their community. Our mission at Wingfield High School is to improve attendance behavior and curriculum knowledge slash growth through the combined efforts of students, teachers, parents, and community stakeholders while improving the graduation rate in a safe environment. My name is Shamaya Thompson, and I'm a graduating senior at Wingfield High School. I would like to start by giving a little update on some of the sports and activities around the school. Wingfield High School JROTC Drill Team just returned from Richmond, Virginia. They travel alongside Forest Hill to the All Army National Competition. It was a great learning experience for all the cadets. Wingfield High School very own Cadet Kendra Sutton was the first runner-up in the JPS Cadet of the Year Ceremony. She was the commander of troops at the, during this year's passing review. Wingfield High School National Honor Society will be inducting over 50 new students on April 17th. This will be the largest induction ceremony that our National Honor Society has ever had, and will be totaling with over 80-plus students in National Honor Society this year. Wingfield seniors recently visited HBCU College Fair, where more than 20 seniors received onsite admissions to various colleges and even scholarships. Our track season has just begun, and our students still cannot practice on our very own track. The gravel is broken up, and it's hard to walk on the track, let alone run. I included pictures. I sent them, so I know you guys seen them. It's horrible. But that hasn't stopped our track team. Our track boys have started off a little rocky, placing 18th overall in their very first track meet, but they came along and they placed third in the Germantown Invitational and second in the JPS Invitational. They're doing good, but they could be doing a lot better if they had the proper equipment and places to practice on. They also began to work, okay, I know, I did a presentation back in December, and I mentioned that they had stopped working on our bathrooms in the main. So, they had finished the restroom in the main area, and they started to work on the student restrooms on the first hall. We still have a very bad smell on the very first hall, like it's bad. You walk through the school, you can smell it. I invite you to come visit, come smell. And they also work on the bathrooms during school hours, sometimes during the day, and it's very distracting in the classrooms as well. All right. This concludes my report. I'd like to end with our motto, that this is the new Wingfield, where success is the only option, because we are the best, we are better than the rest, we are the Falcons. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Shamaya, for that very informative report, the good, the bad, and the ugly. That's what we need to hear. Thank you for reminding us. And I know someone will be visiting soon, although we trust your nose. Thank you, board members, Dr. Green. I think that was everything under our superintendent's report. Attorney Turner, do we have persons interested in making public comment?
You do.
Thank you for presenting those.
Christine Williams would like to address you regarding parental involvement.
Good evening. It's not as bad as y'all think. Everybody got quiet. I came to address the board and Dr. Green. I do have some serious concerns, but I believe in taking things and doing things decent and in order, and we do, you know, as I say, we're going to try to keep it in-house and not make it public. So, I have spoken with Ms. Thomas and Dr. Davis, but Dr. Green, I would still like to come sit down with you one-on-one to talk directly, because what I actually prepare, my heart tells me right now, don't say this out in public, and I'm just going to respect my intuition. But my other thing is, let me get on my soapbox with my child. I am the parent of Kelvin Gardner. He is an honor student at Provine High School. I think I've emailed you all several times. On next Friday, I'm inviting everybody here, the board, teachers, everybody, I would like you all to come out and support one of your own JPS. He is still conducting his research at Millsap as a high school student. He will be presenting his first talks, and as any mother, I'm nervous because I have no idea what he's talking about, but he's going to be up there talking before a roomful of scientists and professionals in that area. So, we will be at Millsap's, I'll send you all the, not Millsap's, Mississippi College at 1:30 on next Friday to 12:00 is the time that they have scheduled for. Just to show you, this is what Kelvin has been working on. It has his information, it's the DNA binding and clinging emphasis of biofunctional heteromatic salts. I have no idea what that is. But, in short, it's trying to research, cancer research, where you can get the DNA to cling to the healthy cells, but yet destroy the cancerous cells, is what he's doing. I'm very proud of him. It's a process we got here through a teacher recognizing him. I got you. But this is just his report of what he's doing. I want everybody to know, yes, he is representing Provine High School, and I do expect JPS to come out and support him next week, but that's what, and Dr. Green, I'll call for my meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. We're very proud of your son. Thank you. Thank you so much. We have no discipline cases to come before us today, as indicated on the board. Item eight, Ms. Miller, review of audit for fiscal year ended June 2018.
Thank you, Dr. Harriston, Dr. Green, members of the board. I am pleased to present an overview of the audit for fiscal year ended June 30, 2018. I'm handing out hard copies because I'm sure you all read all 81 pages of that document, but I do want to give you a brief overview of the audit and where we stand as far as our finances are concerned. Again, this is the audit review for fiscal year ended June 30, 2018. There are two audit requirements, actually, accreditation standard four, MDE requires that we have a fiscal audit that's to be completed no more than nine months after the end of the fiscal year, which is March 31, and it must be conducted by an independent auditor or the Office of the State Auditor. We do not, the audits of... We do not, the audits of, um, the audit firm of JDCPAs and advisors of Mississippi, of Jackson began the audit in twenty eighteen. We are happy to report that we submitted our draft report to the State Auditor's Office in February, which is the earliest we have ever done, and we also received our letter of acceptance and approval on March the seventh, which is about three weeks prior to the deadline. So again, we are very proud of that, um, of that aspect. Um, just to give you a brief outlines on the hi- highlights of the audit, our net position decreased about thirty-three million dollars, because there are some audit guidelines that require now all state agencies to carry on their books the liability that the state has for any, um, post-employment, uh, benefits that are payable to retirees. So last year, I think we talked about Gatsby sixty-seven, which required us to carry the, uh, liability for retirement benefits that are paid to those retirees. And this is now a new requirement that requires all, all state entities to carry whatever additional benefits that the state is liable for, for our employees, uh, as they retire. So that is, um, a net, a negative on our net position, but again, it's only because of their book interests that are required by the state government. Our general fund, fund balance increased, and we're very happy to report about one-point-one million dollars over twenty seventeen. We also decreased our, our long-term debt by eight million due to principal payments during the year, which means we are paying off our debt, uh, accurately and according to the, um, requirements that we have by the bond covenants. One of the things that, um, is always talked about with school districts is where do we spend our money? And, um, for several years, we've had, um, some questions about that, and as, as other school districts are also questioned about that. But what I wanted to show you is that in our governmental funds, which is, um, basically district maintenance and those major funds, we spend over fifty-five point nine percent directly on instruction. The other piece of that that is never talked about is the green, the school administration. That is the expenses for the principals, the assistant principals, the guidance counselors, those people that have to be in a school to make a school run. So when you look at that, the majority, the great majority of our expenditures and governmental funds is spent directly on instruction and school-based instruction. Our average per pupil expenditure this, for twenty eighteen was twelve thousand five hundred and seven dollars, and that includes all of our funds, including title, exceptional ed, and general, general funds. Our fund balance, and we talk about that a lot, um, fund balance is guided by two standards. We have an accreditation standard four dot seven, which is an MDE requirement that says we must have seven percent, no less than seven percent in fund balance of district maintenance revenue. That's eleven-twenty at June thirty of any fiscal year. But our board policy also requires us to have an unassigned fund balance policy of no less than seven percent of general fund revenue. So there are two revenue sources, but we are guided by these standards. I will say that, um, GFWA, which is the Government Finance Office Association, which is one of the, um, best areas that has best practices for, for its, all governmental entities, really suggests about a ten percent fund balance policy. Um, we are getting there. I will tell you that I'm very proud of, of where we've come from. I think, um, in, um, the next slide, we'll talk about kind of where we were. Next slide. If you look at two, two thousand and fourteen, um, the fund balance requirement, the seven percent for accreditation standards four dot seven, which is the, the, the guiding principle from MDE, the requirement was fourteen point two million, and we had at that time four point one million dollars. So you can see where we were woefully underfunded as it comes to fund balance. If you look to, um, looking toward the orange, which is where we want that number to grow, if you look at twenty sixteen, we were at nineteen point five, where the requirement was fifteen point five. This year, we are at twenty point three million, and the requirement is at sixteen point three. So we have, um, surpassed the fund balance requirement for MDE. I think we're at eight point two-one percent, eight point seven-one percent, I'm sorry. Last year, we were at eight point forty-six percent. So we are above the seven percent. Uh, of course, it's, we're very excited about this, 'cause again, back in twenty, well, twenty-twelve, which I didn't reflect on the chart, we were actually at one point seven-three percent. So we made some significant gains over the past several years. The comparison to the fund balance policy, policy DGA is the one that talks about, uh, no less than several percent of general fund revenues. Again, if you look at twenty fourteen, we were right at the, the threshold of seven point one-four percent. We had a high in twenty sixteen of twenty-one point four. Again, in twenty seventeen, we took some significant, um, reductions. We had, um, some things that impacted us as far as expenditures. But looking at twenty eighteen, we're very pleased to say that we're at ten point, uh, six-two percent at twenty-one million dollars. So we are still, uh, significantly, in my opinion, ahead of the fund balance policy as, as guided by the board. So our final results from our audit, we have an unmodified report, which is exactly what you want. We have no material weaknesses, no areas of non-compliance, no question calls, yet again, for the second year. We have one deficiency noted in the reporting of our monthly, uh, food service claims. We actually self-reported that. It was revealed to us during a monitoring visit by MDE. So we, we went ahead and corrected it immediately, and then we reported it to our auditors. And again, it was accepted by the Office of the State Auditor on March the seventh. So we're very pleased to provide you with another really successful audit review, an audit for fiscal year eighteen. You got, you've received from, from Dr. Green and myself a letter, a cover letter on there that talks about some other areas, um, in detail. There are some areas, of course, as we mentioned, that we need to be mindful of, the decline in revenue, which is talking about basically Avalon Taxes and also M A E P. We know what that is. But we also talk about the fact that we know this board is here to support this district as we make decisions to continue making our strides and making our district fiscally stable. So thank you again. Oh, and I forgot to thank my staff. I don't know if they're here or not. I invited, I told them it was gonna be long, so they may not stay. But my staff works on this audit, generally starts around October, and it lasts continuously. And we have auditors in and out of the office, sometimes three to four days a week. They actually have an office inside of our office. And so my staff is always ready to work with them. They work night and day. Margaret Purnell is our Executive Director of Finance. Um, she works constantly with our auditors. And thank you for your support when we ask you to complete items and do things for us. But again, um, our team is pleased to present this audit to the district, again, showing another year of fiscal stability.
Thank you so much, Ms. Miller. Good job.
I did, I guess one question I had, does, does this require a board approval?
It does not.
It does not?
It does not.
I've received the question, I've received the answers. I'll review them, and if I have other questions, I'll follow up.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you so much, and thanks to your team so much for this hard work and for the good report.
Dr. Harrison, I just wanna take a moment of, um, point of privilege, just to say a huge thank you to our Chief Financial Officer and to her entire team, all the work that they've done to ensure that the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. Um, you know, it's inevitable that something will be missed. Um, it would be awesome to have a, um, an audit with absolutely no little specs on it. Um, but I'm so excited that, given all of the millions of dollars that they manage for us, that the only thing that was found was, um, a, a timeliness issue that we acknowledge and will continue to improve upon. So thank you, um, Mrs. Miller, and to the entire team for your very diligent and hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Uh, Dr. Merritt, reporting on a monthly board update regarding our school improvement plan.
Yes, ma'am. Great evening to Dr. Harrison and the board and Dr. Green. Um, we have for, before you today, uh, school updates that will include schools that have a designation of, uh, TSI, Targeted Support and Improvement, ATS I, Additional Targeted Support and Improvement, and SAR schools. As a reminder, the one, schools that are labeled TSI and ATS I are schools that have a federal designation, and the SAR schools, schools at risk, have a state designation. Just to, uh, uh, inform you, the schools that have the targeted support and improvement are as follows, Hardy, Peoples, and Cywell, and it's specifically based on subgroup performance, where, um, which the subgroup is our students with disabilities. Those with the ATS I, uh, designations are Galloway and Forest Hill. And it's basically, um, the race in economically disadvantaged, and we really wanna focus in on, on the economically disadvantaged. And they look at, um, from the federal side, uh, the performance of these students being comparable to, uh, other subgroups, um, in terms of test performance. So at this time, principals will come. We will begin with Area One. And so if all principals, and Dr. Bradley will accompany them from Area One. And we know that the board will have questions, but we ask that principals limit their presentations to two minutes, and we will monitor the time over here. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Merritt. Well, welcome our principals forward.
Good evening, Board President Harrison, Superintendent Dr. Green, and board members. As a part of the requirements by the MDE, each school is required to address certain elements when reporting to the community and the local board. Some of those elements include school goals and a brief description of how their community is involved at their schools. Also, you'll hear redundantly tonight, some of the school leaders here are enrolled in NISL, uh, and NISL partners with schools, and it's the National Institute for School Leadership, partners with schools, districts, and state departments of education to provide leaders with the knowledge, skills, and tools necessary to design and lead high-performing schools. We'll start with Area One, then Area Two, and finally, Area Four. The principals from Area Three have been combined with other areas. So they'll come up as the different areas are presenting. And remember, we're limiting this to two minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Dr. Banyard. I'll be presenting the data for Peoples Middle School. School goals and progress towards goals. Peoples Middle School is currently rated an F with two-hundred-and-sixty points. Our overall school goal is to be a C-rated school by gaining at least sixty-eight accountability points. From benchmark one to two, we saw an increase in math proficiency by two percent, growth overall by three percent, and bottom twenty-five students by eight percent. School goals and progress, progress towards goals from benchmark one to two, we saw a decrease in reading proficiency by four percent, growth overall by sixteen percent, and bottom twenty-five by sixteen percent. School goals and progress towards goals. Our leadership team meets bi-monthly to assess, monitor, and adjust our school improvement plan. Currently, we have implemented four out of thirteen indicators. The biggest challenge with implementation rests on the fact that we currently have fifteen novice staff members. On, on one-year license, six of the fifteen teach ELA. School goals and progress towards goals, review of leading, lagging indicators as they relate to. Student attendance, we average ninety percent, but strive for ninety-five percent. Teacher attendance, we average ninety-two percent and strive for ninety-five percent. Chronic absentee, approximately fifteen students have been identified that are keeping our rates high. None of discipline referrals, it's no major issue. Involvement of the school's site council district. Currently, we have had three site council meetings in order to help motivate our students, staff. Merritt Health, our school adopter, has donated uniforms, gift cards, provided staff luncheons, and helps to sponsor the transition to middle school program. We also have a functioning parent center, uh, resources for both parents and students. We've also had a transition from, from middle school to high school that was held to help parents and students as well. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Banyard. I have a question. You mentioned that, uh, fifteen of your teaching staff, your educators are first-year teachers? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
What's your total number of teachers in your building?
Uh, we have approximately thirty-two teachers, ma'am.
So fifteen out of your thirty-two are first-year.
One-year license.
Thank you. That is a challenge. We appreciate your work.
Yes, ma'am.
Board members, do you have other questions or comments?
Uh, yes, Dr. Harrison. Um, I was wondering if you could, um, it was great to see the math growth trending in the right direction. Um, and at the same time, we saw the reading backed off a little bit, um, from the first to second. So I was wondering if you could, um, share insights as to why the reading declined.
We have six of our one, one-year first-year teachers are all in ELA. So we have new teachers for sixth grade ELA, seventh grade, and eighth grade. And all of those teachers are not certified. They're on a one-year emergency license. So the challenge for us has been to grow those teachers from being new teachers to seasoned teachers. And it's a, it's a challenging task, but it's a task that we're trying to meet daily.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other comments, questions, board members? Thank you so much for your work.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Hampton, Principal Forest Hill High School. Uh, first, starting off, we are an ATS I school. Uh, we have a total of four-hundred-and-sixty-seven points, uh, which rates us as an F as of right now. Our goal is to increase, uh, in steps. We know we can't, um, accomplish going from an F to an A in one particular year, but we're trying to do something that's reasonable. Uh, first benchmark, uh, we did see some improvement from our previous year's scores and impact, on the impact table. Uh, second and third benchmarks, did see improvements with the exception of Algebra One. Uh, just to give you a context about, uh, our math department, we have ten teachers right now. We only have two certified teachers, eight vacancies. So we're working on that. Uh, we're using that annuity to count to, to, to kind of, uh, bridge that particular gap. Uh, but with ELA, mathematics, as relates to our leading and lagging indicators, we have in-school tutorials. We know we have a problem with our scholars staying out of school, so we have in-school tutorials going on in our tested area subjects. Our mantra or motto at Forest Hill High School is "All Hands on Deck." So everyone has taken the stand that they're gonna take their planning periods to make sure they do what's needed for our particular scholars. Also, um, to end, as relates to, uh, our P-16 Council, PTSA, we've established, uh, Parent Observation Week, which we call POW. We've had a week each semester where parents come in to, um, review the school logistics, classrooms, and everything like that. We also, we had our commit-to-graduate ceremony, uh, where our ninth graders, they actually, we had a ceremony, invited parents. It was very, very well attended to show them that, hey, graduation is the goal. We need you to stay here. And last, we're using our title funds as relates to our title plan to ensure that we have the necessary mobile devices for testing, different things like that, so our scholars can test, so we can mimic, uh, information from the math assessments. Are there any questions?
Board members, questions?
Um, yes, I had a question, Dr. Harrison. Um, it was, it was great to see growth for both reading and math trending in the right direction from first to second assessment.
Yes, sir.
I noticed, and I heard, um, what you shared about the, just the challenge of finding certified math teachers.
Yes, sir.
What effect, so we have a three percent proficiency, benchmark one, benchmark two in math at Forest Hill. What effect does that have on graduation rates?
Well, in that particular instance, as relates to Algebra One, that particular proficiency.
So, so that's a good point. So that, that is specifically related to the Algebra One?
Yes, sir.
So is this a test of, is the assessment for ninth graders?
Well, ninth or tenth graders.
Or tenth, okay.
Yes, sir. We, uh, we are testing our tenth grade for Biology One and Algebra One. But to answer your question, yes, it does have an effect on graduation. As you can see in our particular plan, we use our title dollars for scholars previously to enroll at Mer, where we're doing our, uh, classes from Hines, so that they can, if they didn't pass, we were allowed to pay for them, so they can go to class, or they can graduate, to increase our graduation rate.
So the way we address it, so, so we have, if, if they're not able to pass in the first year, that's the strategy, is to, um, identify other coursework for the students and the Hines, um, option, is how, is that how we're managing that? for the students in the Hines option, is that how we're managing that?
Well, that's one. We have also, we have retesting in high school. So they retest in the fall, and they also retest in the spring. So we have in between those particular testing windows, we have tutorials that take place to kind of aid those scholars in those particular subjects.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
This is not directed to you necessarily, Mr. Hampton. I'm not sure who to ask, but it's a theme, it's a program called Class Works. Is that something after school, and do all of our schools use it, or no?
Well, Class Works is something that we use as part of our MTSS process. So we use that throughout the school day to help our promising 25, our bottom 25, as you all see in the chart. So it's some type of intervention that we use district-wide.
And is that, is that something recent, we started in the last couple of years, do I remember correctly, for two years? Second year, we're in our second year. So we'll be looking for some kind of assessments down the road of to how that's working. Thank you for helping me remember that.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Good evening, Dr. Harrison, and board members, Superintendent Green. I am Marvin Davis, Principal of Galloway Elementary School. We are an ATSI school. Our target group is, of course, African-American students in their performance level. Our overall goal is to become a B-level school, a performance rate of 378. Last year, we moved from 76 points beyond where we were at first at F status, brought us to current status of D. As it relates to our progress towards our goal, our data is quite mixed. It's fluctuated, but currently, we have fully implemented at least four of the 13 standards that are present. And of course, we're working toward getting the other ones that are limited improved as well. We seek to do all that we can. As it relates to our leads and lags, I want to definitely mention that we are 60.2% there moving forward as an initial piece for ELA. And of course, we've decreased in our promising 25 area there. Want to let you know that our attendance rates are suffering in a sense for student. We have chronic absenteeism there, I want to definitely let you know, we're working to get those corrected immediately. With that, our EWS team provides meetings, letters, visits of sorts, and of course, phone calls to help improve the attendance rate there. Teachers also share the same. We have a few teachers who are suffering with attending school regularly, that is also bringing our averages down. I'd like to remind you that also that our title funds are being used at best to provide evidence-based services for our students and teachers, and giving them research-based strategies and material that's used to help implement a more effective use of funds, and of course, instructional practices. We have a site council that's very involved in our school and provide us much assistance. I'd like to definitely say it is a community effort in what we have developed at Galloway Elementary School. As you recall, we were merged with Brown Elementary, and with that, it has brought forth some challenges that we can manage one day at a time. Are there any questions, board members?
I have a question about Saturday Academy, and if any other principals are using the Saturday Academy. Could you say 30 seconds about what that looks like?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to very much say that we are a proud school for Askewmore Jackson. With that being the case, we are a near feeder pattern member, and we have special funds set aside just for that feeder pattern to provide Saturday Academies. The principals have a total time to be able to work out a strategy, a plan of action to use at best for what we can do to help with the funds that are available.
Are there other Saturday Academies in the district? Okay, Dr. Merritt, would you help gather that info for next time around? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, board members, any other questions?
Yes, it was great to see, you know, as far as the goals for the overall school on track for reading proficiency, math proficiency, math growth as well, so that was great to see. Two questions. At the same time, I see, you know, we went backwards on growth for the bottom 25%. What do we do about that?
Part of it is due to staffing issue, and of course, pedagogy. We do have some instructional staff members who have emergency license, and of course, with that comes a little practice with us pulling those students who are in the promising 25, utilizing our math intervention as that we've been able to add to our staff for instructional purposes. But as it relates to the overall performance, we'll have to go back and provide those students who were merged and did not come in with the skill set, the necessary skills to at least gain the basic operation principles, and of course, use a testing blueprint to provide them a better gauge as to where to go.
Thank you. And one other question I had, what happened from January to February in the discipline referrals? There appeared to be a huge jump.
I do agree, sir, it was, indeed a huge jump there. Some of those are repeat offenders for some of the offenses that did occur. But we did have some bus discipline issues that were actually coupled with those as well, along with some suspensions that had to be given in the sense of maintaining order and structure in our school.
Okay, thank you.
I've got one more question, and it's in regards to the last statement that you made. Last year, and I'll speak for myself, one of the most difficult decisions, I believe, I had to make as a board member was seeing the merger of certain schools, including Brown as a community school. And so I'm wondering if there is something specific that you would like to pull out for us to know in terms of how that's impacting your capacity to do this work here?
I do appreciate you offering the opportunity. I'd like to definitely say one of which is most important for me, along with our staff, would be able to have qualified teachers to be able to come with the school set that we can corral together as a team. With the merger initially, it began with us having option to receive some instructional staff from the school that merged. However, that did not take place due to the teachers being offered also an opportunity to be able to go along with the teacher, with the principals they were serving with.
Thank you.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Green, board members. I am Donald Boyd, Principal at Cywell Middle School. Currently, we have an accountability rating of 249. Benchmark one, we're at 250. From benchmark one to benchmark two, you did see a decrease from a 250 to a 245, especially in the math portion. And you can attribute this to standards not being taught at that moment, or certain standards being assessed, so the students didn't have an understanding. So of course, you would see a decrease in that as well. Also, there was an increase with science from 27 to 39%. So as the year goes, you should see a natural progression in that as well. For our implementation of SOARS, to date, we have eight to 13 standards that have been implemented. We are working aggressively to address the school culture and climate piece. We understand that our parents want to be involved, but they don't know how to be involved. So at this point, we don't want to keep them at arms-length, but we really want to engage them and have those collisions, or have deliberate conversations with them so that we can embrace them as well. As it relates to student attendance and teacher attendance as well, we see that we're subpar in that area. Student attendance, we are subpar because students are not coming to school, but there are things in place. We have the early warning system to address those students who are not at school. We celebrate them for coming to school, and for those teachers who are absent, it's because of FMLA, or also just teachers just being chronically absent for no rhyme or reason. But that does have an impact on student achievement as well. The number of discipline referrals, as you will see from January, from February to January to February, that was an increase, but that was because teachers were not absent. So therefore, we're giving the supports to those teachers at this time. Also, for parent involvement, school site council, we have the PTSA, Sam's Club is our adopter. And we also have something that's called Progressive Wednesday in Parents.edu. At this time, parents are able to come in, speak with teachers about attendance, behavior, and course performance, so that they can help their students. That's it, any questions?
Yes, I have a question. What happened, how did you get reading proficiency to go from 6% to 57% from first to second?
That was a major typo. A major typo. A major typo. So that means everybody needs to come to Cywell if we're at a 57% proficiency. So if you see that one went from 6 to 5%, so actually, we're still running neck and neck, so no.
It's 5%?
Yeah, 5% proficiency and not 57. Yes. But if we grow our bottom 25, we're well on our way to that as well. And as you can see, we're holding at our bottom 25.
No, I did see that.
You think we don't read, but we read.
Yes, ma'am, I see.
They do Saturday.
Questions?
No, Dr. Zivak, you brought to my attention, remember that you also do Saturday school, so that's great.
Yeah, Saturday school, January the 19th. So we do have great attendance, and we do have people in the audience. We have Ms. Keller, we have Ms. Haynes here, representing Cywell tonight, so.
Yay, thank you for coming out, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Anything else?
No, we appreciate your work very much.
No, thank you.
Great day. My name is Luthetha Yaluckett, and I am the principal at Oak Forest Elementary. As we seek to move Oak Forest out of school improvement, tonight, I will present you with a brief update on specific goals and indicators. I will begin with our school goals and progress towards goal. Oak Forest Elementary at this time is rated 228, which is an F rating. Our goal is to move Oak Forest to 269 or above for D, C, that's what we're pushing for. But 269 or above is our accountability points that we are trying to gain. I will present to you according to the district pre-test to benchmark two comparison with overall growth report. Oak Forest overall growth in ELA was 21.4%, math 28.1%, science 27%. However, we did have a decrease of 3.6% in fourth grade ELA. Our progress towards planned implementation in Mississippi SOARS, we have fully implemented 10 out of 13. I would like to highlight just a couple, what we are doing to be 100% compliance. Quality professional development. Our consulting groups are working with our fourth and fifth grade ELA and math teachers. Our MDAE literacy coaches are working with our K through third grade and specific literacy target skills. And new teachers are given the opportunity to do peer observation with veteran teachers. Leading and lagging indicators, student attendance, 91.9, teachers, 95.5, yay, we're there. However, our chronic absentee is 25 to 28%. We do not receive any 1003 funding. Our site council is involved in all aspects of the school, especially dealing with our parent involvement plan, our homeless, our Title I funding, inputting ideas for student and staff recognition. This is my presentation.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Yaluckett. Board members, you have questions?
Yes, Dr. Harrison. So we didn't have the first benchmark data, but looking at the second benchmark data, see, we're at two of six of the, of the, of the subjects, or of the measures that count for the formula. What's the plan to increase that, that overall success rate?
You said we're at what?
So I was comparing the goals, the school goals, to get to the 311 points, you know, and so, you know, you've got reading, math, proficiency growth, all growth, bottom 25%. And two of those, it looks like we're on track to meet as of this assessment. What's the plan to increase it from two to three or four or five or six?
Our plan is always to monitor the assessment, the data, making sure we make adjustment with small groups, differentiate instructions, use our, continue to use our literacy coach for POCs. We had a FIT meeting on yesterday to identify those standard masters from the last benchmark, to make sure when teachers go in, they have an action plan on how they're going to address those skills that the students are lacking in. We have also decided to use our resource teachers to come in and work with our low-performing students. We also have, as you know, in all schools, we have the interventions. We have a classwork, as you have heard before. We have iReady that we are using. So that's a part of our plan, but they're probably going to pull my shirttail. But we are continuing to monitor the data and provide instruction based up on our common weekly assessment. We do a standard mastery every week that students in third through fifth grade have to take. The teachers now have an action plan based up on the different strategies that they have identified that the students need help in. So that's the main thing you need to do when you're trying to make sure you move that school from that 228 into that D or C rating. Any other questions?
Can you give us a sense of your first-year teachers, the number of first-year teachers percentage?
Yes, I can. I would also like to give myself a little high point here, because last year, I took over the school, and we had 10 limited service, over seven to 10 limited service teachers. This year, we did start off with all licensed teachers. However, the zero to three years of experience is, again, a total of 10 teachers. And those teachers with those one-year licenses, but they are all licensed teachers. If that's what you're asking.
How many total teachers?
Oh, total teachers are 18 classroom teachers, 23 certified teachers, which includes exceptional education, music, the librarian, the counselor. So we have 18 classroom teachers, three teachers in each grade level from K through fifth grade.
Thank you.
Oak Forest was also a school that received students from Woodville Heights. Just for the same opportunity that we did for the other principals. How, what, what would you like to share from that?
Well, I believe that decisions have to be made. And when the decision was made, it is our job as administrators to make sure we welcome those students in, and make sure we blend the culture together. So one of the things that we did is to make sure that all students felt welcome at Oak Forest Elementary. We changed the school motto, "One school, one goal, excellency." And so, you can't send them away, they're there. So I don't think about that, because the schools were close. The students came, we received them. And it's our job to make sure that they receive the same education, whether they came from Woodville Heights, Keys Elementary, Baker Elementary, George. It's our job to welcome them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Stephanie Wilson, and I am serving as principal at G. and Smith Elementary School. G. and Smith is a school at risk. We are currently rated an F with 269 points. Our overall goal is to move a grade level, which will increase, we will increase by 14 points, which we will be considered a D school. Our summary of our benchmark assessment with benchmark one and benchmark two, we did increase in our proficiency by 11 points. We decreased our math by six points. For our growth of all students, we did increase in our reading by 3.4%, and we decreased in our math by 5%. For our bottom 25 students, we did have a decrease in our reading by 12 points and four points in math. Our progress towards our planned implementation in Mississippi SOARS, our school leadership team, we meet, we monitor and adjust our plan accordingly. We currently have implemented eight out of 13 indicators. A special thank you to our school leadership team who are here today. They have decided to take ownership of indicators in which they will lead that particular indicator to ensure that we are implementing it for school improvement. Other school goals and progress towards our goals, we are very fortunate to have our, to meet our student ADA, and also to increase our teacher ADA from 2% in February to now it's from 94 to 96%. So our goal is to strive for 95% for our teacher ADA. Our student ADA, as mentioned, we are above 95%, so we're very proud of that. We currently have five students on our list for chronic absenteeism. However, three of those students have withdrawn, so we have only less than 7% as stated in our report. We have no major discipline issues, however, we do have some, but nothing major. For our community engagement council, we are currently partnering with our community adopters with, um, Magnolia Health um, to provide additional support as book buddies and tutors for our third grade students to assist them on their math assessment. Are there any questions?
Yes, a couple. First of all, um, the attendance data was incredible. I mean, it looked like you had ninety-eight percent of the students in the school in February. I mean, the teacher attendance data is, was above ninety-five percent as well. And then twenty discipline referrals all year. What are you doing to get those type of the numbers?
For our student attendance, it's very important that we relay the information to them that school is important. We tell them to come to school every day. I send a notice home to their parents every month, letting them know how important attendance is. Uh, for our teacher attendance, um, I think they just love teaching. Um, they are there and we did have an increase from, um, February, we're from March to February. So the teachers are there, they're in place, they are teaching the children. Uh, we do try to create a culture where students feel comfortable, um, where the, um, teachers feel supported as well as the parents. So I think that that does play a role in our attendance as well as our, um, behavior.
And, um, on the student achievement, um, looking, I was looking at the, um, reading, um, proficiency went up, which was good to see. On the growth of the bottom twenty-five percent, it did see some regression there. To what would you attribute that and how do we get that back up?
Well, we are doing a couple of things. Uh, we currently just began our extended school day where we are inviting our children, identifying them based on data, um, looking at their data, seeing where they are. Uh, we're choosing those students strategically to bring them in in the afternoon, do an extended day to work with them on their reading skills. Um, we also have, we also participate in Saturday school with Asimor Jackson, that is a part of our partnership. And we are also getting those children as well. So we're doing everything that we can, you know, to possibly support our students. But we're also making, um, contact with parents. We had a parent education night where we invited the parents to come out and we informed them of where their students were from benchmark one, benchmark two, as well as benchmark three. And we, um, explained to them where we need them to be. So that was something that was very important for us to give a data meeting to our parents. So we're, we're striving to, um, just increase knowledge about the data with our students as well as with, um, our parents. So we're working.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Like to acknowledge my teachers one more time, I'm sorry.
Yes, please do, that's important. Thank you all for your work and for joining us tonight.
Board members, I just want to, um, uh, make sure that everyone's aware that Ms. Wilson, uh, took the reins at, uh, G. and Smith, I think, two months ago? In February, right. So, um, when Mr. McCoo, uh, exited. Uh, so she's been in place for two months and building relationships with the team. It's excited to see the team is here and continuing to, um, really drive improvement at the school. Just wanted you to know that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Tawonza Domino, principal of Jim Hill High School. Jim Hill High School is currently rated an F. We are a school at risk. Uh, last year, we had four-hundred and sixty-seven points. Our goal is to have five-hundred and ten points or more and, uh, be rated a level D. Uh, according to the benchmark one and two data, Jim Hill did, um, show growth in proficiency in both the reading and math, as well as growth in the bottom twenty-five and the growth for all, it was minimal. We showed more growth in ELA to continue to address our math. We have hired the Kirkland Group and they will be providing Algebra One Boot Camp and, uh, also provide a professional development for our Algebra One teachers. Of the twenty-two indicators in Source, Jim Hill has fully implemented nine. We are working diligently to address the other thirteen indicators. One of the biggest challenges for our school, as well as the other schools, is we have a lot of new teachers in the building. We have six limited service teachers, we have thirteen one-year teachers on one-year license, and we have one retired teacher. And also those teachers need intensive training on effective teaching practices. Our attendance data for students is at eighty-eight percent, our goal is at ninety-five percent to address this. We have created our early warning assistance team where we track student attendance and we work with contact and parents, as well as we follow up with this with our school leadership team. Also, uh, with our teacher attendance data, we're at ninety-four percent, which is good, and we're trying to increase that to ninety-five percent. For our chronic absenteeism, we're at forty percent, and we're also utilizing our early warning assistance team to address this issue. And that comes from a lot of our students who are assigned to Capital City, they do not attend. Um, uh, discipline referrals, if you noticed, we started off at like one-hundred twenty-nine, then we dropped, then we kind of had a slight increase around times of the holidays. Uh, we're utilizing PBIS and TAP, Talk About the Problem, and that's a conflict resolution program. And we're also looking at assigning students in-school suspension versus out-of-school suspension. Uh, we do have a partnership with St. Mark's Episcopal Church as well as Bank Plus.
Thank you, Dr. Domino. Board members, do you have questions?
Yes, what it's, uh, uh, looking at the movement from first to second assessment, I think, looks like we're trending in the right direction. Uh, still gotta, you know, the goals are still, we need to work to reach those. So what, what, how do we get to those goals?
Um, we recently started the extended day tutorial program. Uh, we're working with, uh, teachers, looking at, you know, make sure we're strategic when we have those tutorial programs, looking at our focus standards or our project standards, which are highly rated, I mean, that are, have the highest, uh, you know what I'm saying? I can't even say. But we're looking at those particular standards that are heavily weighted so that we can, um, hopefully gain more points, uh, even looking at our size scores. You saw we had a decrease, now we have our new science standards and we have some personnel issues, so we're just trying to be more strategic and focused and make sure we're really looking at the data to drive our instructions as well as our tutorial remediation for our students.
Would you speak to the question of the, your, uh, teaching staff and your experience? Did, did we ask you that?
Uh, I, I said, I addressed it with the number of limited service teachers. We had six and thirteen one-year licenses and one retired.
And out of your total number?
That's six, thirteen, like about twenty, twenty teachers.
And your, your discipline referrals dropped, is that since August? Am I reading that right?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we, uh, we have PBIS, which ironically, the children in high school, they, they like the incentives and they like being recognized. So that's positive. And, uh, the TAP program is student-led, which is great because students are able to, you know, identify what the conflicts are and come up with their own resolutions versus us adults taking charge.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, board members? Thank you so much, Dr. Domino.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Katrina Crawford, principal at Isvo Elementary. We are currently have a designation of ASAR school. Um, we got that because we scored or accumulated a total of two-hundred fifty-nine points last year on the math assessment. Um, our goal this year is to move our school from where we are. We're gonna shed the F and move on upward, um, in terms of progress being made. Um, we are making strides, positive strides, as we move the school from one level upward. And I say so, uh, based upon our benchmark assessment data. Uh, moving from the pre-assessment to benchmark number two, we are moving upward, uh, in, in terms of showing overall growth in all areas. For ELA, there was a growth of twenty-nine point nine percent overall. Um, for math, there was thirty-nine point six percent increase in growth and also for science, a total of thirty-five point one percent, um, overall. Again, that's from pre-assessment to benchmark number two. Um, and our strides to move the school forward, um, our leadership team, we meet bi-monthly. And in doing so, we're, we're meeting, um, to re, to assess, to monitor, make whatever necessary changes to our school-wide improvement plan as needed. Um, out of our thirteen indicators, we've fully implemented nine of those. Um, the others that we're current, currently still working on, uh, more so, I still kind of have a new staff. Um, they're coming in, still new, still not quite familiar with, uh, writing effective lesson plans and also, um, more so implementing, I would say, the Malin Hunter design in terms of effective teaching is concerned. Also along with classroom management and small group instruction, in addition to the MTSS process. But we're, we're working strategically with those, with those teachers to address those needs. Um, in terms of leading and lagging indicators, um, we know that our goal for, um, students and staff is ninety-five percent daily. Um, with our students from month one to month seven, um, we've averaged ninety-three percent. A little bit below the ninety-five, but we're working diligently to address the attendance issues with, you know, with incentives for attendance. And we're also placing that on our newsletters each and every week that goes home to parents. With our teachers, um, overall, from month one to month seven, we had a ninety percent for ADA for the teachers. We did come, maybe around February, it dropped dramatically. I think it was seventy-seven percent, which that kind of had a, a direct effect on the number of ODRs or referrals that were, that were submitted um, for the month of January and February. That's where that upspike in, uh, in referrals came because the teachers weren't there. And unfortunately, the students suffered with their behavior. Um, I have a partnership this year with The Links and also newly to be added to our school is an adopter is, um, Mount Nebo. Um, they provide, um, Rice to Read, which is a great program with our second grade students. We're kind of charting them because they'll be the ones on the receiving end of third grade next year. With Rice to Read, they come every Tuesday and Thursday and they provide reading support with, uh, ReadInfluency and Phonics and Sight Words. Um, with The Links also, they come in, they provide tutorial sessions. Um, also family or kindergarten, family academies, they come once a month. But again, they're great partners. They provide school supplies, backpacks, instructional support, um, staff incentives, you name it, they're there. And we're just, we're, we're working again strategically to meet the needs of all our students, hand in hand, one by one. Are there any questions?
Yes, so the, I saw that the math proficiency jumped twelve percentage points.
Yes.
Is, is that, to what would you attribute that?
Well, they're, they're working real, as I keep saying, they're working real strategically. They're honing in on those heavily weighted math standards based upon what's going to be assessed on the math assessment. But then I also have a fantastic interventionist along with interventionist assistants. And what we're also doing is, um, with my resource staff, music library and counseling, during the mornings, like that power hour, as we call it, they're being resourced out to classrooms and they're, they're providing the one-on-one, um, instructional support to those classroom teachers as well. And what we're also doing now, um, we have that power hour in the afternoon from one until two, where they're honing in on those target standards as well. And my kindergarten through second grade teacher assistants, they're being dispersed after that uninterrupted reading block from nine thirty until twelve. They're assigned to classes third through fifth and they're honing in specifically on those students and providing instructional support to those teachers as well. So that way, they're getting the best of both worlds, those tested grade levels are. So that serves as support as well.
What's the difference in, and there may not be any, is, I'm asking to educate me, in, uh, in intervention targeted towards increasing proficiency versus say, increasing growth in the bottom twenty-five percent? Is there any difference?
There really isn't. When, when I look at the children, I don't look at them as this group and this group. They're all our children and we're just trying to move the needle. We're trying to educate and enhance all of our students, not just one particular category of students. But we, we're not letting, we're not just focusing our attention just to this group or to just this group. We're looking at all the, all the scholars at Isvo.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
It's, I think it answered my question. And, and, yes.
Is that it? You have a great evening.
Good evening. Dr. Harrison, school board member, Dr. Green. I'm Vertis Holmes, principal of Hardy Middle School. Hardy Middle School is currently rated an F with two-hundred and forty-nine accountability points. Our original school-wide goal was to move to a C gaining seventy-nine points. But current data trends indicate that our school will be a D-rated school by gaining at least forty points for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. Our benchmark data for, from benchmark term one to two, was showed the ELA showed an increase in proficiency. Math showed a decrease and science showed a decrease in, uh, proficiency. Our school goals, uh, as far as Source go, we conduct leadership team meetings twice a month to discuss best instructional practices for students. Five of the thirteen indicators have been fully implemented. We're currently monitoring the other eight, uh, indicators. Our leading and lagging indicators are student attendance. Uh, our average is ninety-one percent, eighty-eight. Our goal is to be, uh, ninety-five percent. Teacher attendance is at ninety-four percent. Our goal is ninety-five as well. Chronic absenteeism is a big issue. We have thirty-eight percent of our student population that labeled as chronic absenteeism. And the number of distant referrals, uh, on average is about thirty-six a month. Our site council environment plays an important role in the school-wide plan as well. We also have, uh, other sponsors in the school, the PTSA. We have St. Dominic is our school adopter. Pecan Park Neighborhood Association, uh, is our sixth grade mentoring. They have a sixth grade girls mentoring program. The A-Team, they mentor sixth grade boys. We have, uh, Girl Esteem, which mentors seven grade girls. Are there any questions?
I have none. Board, do you have a question? Anybody?
Um, I did. It, um, first of all, it's great to see ninety-seven percent teacher attendance rate, um, on the, on the last month reported. Um, what? I've got a couple of questions and I've got some general questions, Dr. Green, that I may ask when we finish. How do we go from a five, six percent reading proficiency rate to the target? What do we need to do to get there in, in middle school? And so I'll just start there. And it's particularly at Hardy.
Okay, well, we've identified with the reading, uh, language arts proficiency, we've identified that most of our students have a problem with reading comprehension skills. So we've targeted those students. We have, uh, our interventions pull those students out. The ones that are in the bottom twenty-five, of course, they receive class works, but they're also receiving tutoring from teachers. Uh, last week, we started our after-school tutorial program. So we've designed, um, we've actually targeted certain students that we want to try to help increase their reading proficiency. But overall, it's the reading comprehension skills for our ELA. Students are not where they need to be as far as ELA go. With the math, we, um, through FIT meetings, we found out that it was expressions and equation, that particular standard. With science, we found out that our issue with science from term two benchmarks was the teachers spend more time, uh, on mitosis and meiosis, dealing with the division of cells. So that was something that took more time. So in our FIT, in our FIT meetings, we, uh, discovered that that was a big part of the test that had not been completely covered yet.
I can, uh, affirm firsthand about the time spent on meiosis and mitosis, having an eighth grade daughter at Bailey. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. We appreciate your work.
To that question, um, because it's, it's going to continue to be, um, work for us to lift, um, just in the future. You've, you've heard folks talk about the FIT meetings, these data meetings that, that we hold at this, uh, school level, um, as well as we continue to build out our practices district-wide. Um, understanding and really diving deeply into the assessment tools that we have and our analysis of those assessment tools, you start to identify the students who are a few points away from the next level of proficiency, or proficiency or whatever it might be. You start to identify the students who are lacking or struggling with a particular, uh, group of skills. Um, all of that kind of, and, and several people spoke to that. But I'm mentioning it now because that needs to really drive, as we do that kind of analysis, that needs to, to drive the goals that we set. Which is why you'll, you know, you shouldn't see a lot of moving from five percentage points to, you know, fifty, sixty percentage points or whatever it might be. The, um, and in some schools, you will see a, a larger jump because they've done the analysis to see that so many students are, a few points are much closer to, to that level of proficiency. But those are the kinds of things that the school leaders and their teams will be able to narrate because they've done that analysis uh, to really see where the students are and what's the gap between where they are and where we want them to be to, to reach whatever goal they set. Um, so as we continue on with this work, we'll, we'll try to be as transparent. So as we continue on with this work, we'll, we'll try to be as transparent as possible as to how we've come to the goals that we've set, and therefore, the plans that folks implement in order to get us there.
Great. Thank you.
Next up, we'll have the schools in Area Two. And some of the schools in Area Two were really excited, so they came up with Area One. So they were just happy to go ahead and present. But if we could get Principal Brown to come up for Area Two. Tonight, I'll be filling in for Principal Strong at Johnson Elementary. She was sick, so she's not able to be with us tonight. And I'll go ahead and apologize in advance because I won't be able to answer your questions about her school. But if you send them to me, I will make sure that she gets them and that she gives you an appropriate response. So Johnson's overall goal is to become a C-rated school with three hundred and thirty-three points. As they looked at their benchmark data, they saw from benchmark one to two, there was an increase in ELA proficiency, growth for all, and the lowest performing. But in math, they saw decreases across the board. They attribute their success in ELA to the support that they get from their MDE literacy coach and other resources that they have. Other school goals and progress towards that, the leadership team meets bi-monthly to identify the indicators and SOARs that need attention. Support has been given to their overall lowest performing groups by providing direct instruction, intensive interventions, and pullouts. They have lead partners in the form of Bailey and Kirkland, Bailey for ELA and Kirkland for math. And they work with those teachers in grades four and five to help build their capacities. The principal's role in all of this is that she monitors instruction by conducting walkthrough observations and providing timely feedback to teachers. Also, from Johnson Elementary School, teachers attend district-level professional development sessions, and the principal is enrolled in NISSL. Currently, ten out of the thirteen indicators are what they determine to be full implementation. And they have a focus on aligning instruction at each grade level. At Johnson, they have an active early warning system team. That team tracks and monitors attendance behavior and course performance of the students. If you noted the fluctuation in their ADA for teachers and students, two of their staff members were out on maternity leave, and there was an outbreak in her school during the winter months, which caused a decrease in student attendance. Currently, at Johnson, they have an active site council. They have partners in the community who service book buddies. Broadmoor Baptist Church members have been book buddies for five years. Jackson Miss Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta tutors their third graders. And in addition, their fourth and fifth graders participate in their Saturday Academy. They're pulling on my coat. And that's it for Johnson. But if you have any questions, if you'll send them to us, we'll be happy to get her to answer those questions. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Cheryl Brown, Principal at Wilkins Elementary. Our school's goals and progress towards our goals, our overall school goals right now, we are strategically working to move our school from the current accountability of, unfortunately, the level, label F. We currently have two hundred and fifty-one points on the accountability model, and our goal is to attain fifty points to put us at three hundred and one points, which will give us a rating of a D. Our initial goal was to work towards attaining levels of the C with attaining seventy-nine points on the accountability model. But after going through all of our assessments, our fit meetings, deep conversations, and very courageous conversations with our staff as well as our scholars, we did decide to change our direction and focus on what we felt was more attainable for us at this time based on where our data is projecting us to be. From term one to term two, there were increases in our math and growth for all, and growth for our lowest twenty, oh, okay. Our lowest performing twenty-five percent, as well as an increase in proficiency in our fifth grade science. Unfortunately, we did have decreases from term one to term two in our areas of reading, reading proficiency, our growth for all, as well as the growth of our lowest performing twenty-five percent. What we're doing to work towards meeting our goals, our leadership team does, we meet without, it doesn't matter what goes on. We meet twice a month to work strategically and to ensure that we're monitoring the progression, progression towards implementation of all of our indicators. We have currently fully implemented seven of the thirteen indicators. And with finding out the, the most difficult one for us has been, the most challenging, the one that deals with school culture and climate. And we are working very closely with parents, with all stakeholders, and our EWS teams as well as our PBIS teams to incorporate skills and everything for our children in order for us to move towards, out of that area. Teachers participate in weekly common plannings, pre-observations. We do in-house learning walks as well as out-of-home school learning walks. We participate in early morning, early birth sessions where we work with our scholars based on their data. We have pull-out sessions during the day also, and we also have a part-time math coach as well as two external providers. Our leading and lagging indicators as it relates to student attendance, right now, we have ninety-two percent of our scholars for our ADA. Teachers' ADA is ninety-four percent. We do unfortunately have an issue with chronic absenteeism with over twenty percent of our population, students who have twenty or more absences. We do have, we had an incline, an increase with our discipline office referrals. We had twenty-eight for the last month, and we have put some things in place. And we have worked very, very strategically to give other alternate discipline actions to the students outside of assigning them out-of-school suspensions. So those things are helping us in working towards that. A lot of that is, we have students who are habitual, who, they're the same offenders over and over. We did receive students, we, from, from Wolver Heights when the school closed at the last moment. So we're redirecting those children's behaviors, and what we're finding is that those are the students, for the most part, who are having those behaviors. But we're just about to get them where we need to have them. Also, we do not currently receive any allocation of ten or three funds. Our involvement with our school site council, right now, we are in the process of re-establishing our PTA, and I'm excited about that. This is the first, this is my second year as principal, and we have re-established our PTA. We are currently soliciting support from our partisan education in order to, we don't have, we currently do not have a partner, but we are soliciting support from partisan education. But we do have support for some of our community leaders such as Jackson, the Jackson Metropolitan Bar and Grill. They've offered support with incentives for our teachers as well as celebrity. They offer people to, they come up to judge our reading fairs as well as Celebrity Readers Day. Also, we have a new person, and we're really, really, really trying to get them to come aboard as being our partner generation. And they, their leadership generation makes the leadership of Dr. Margaret Alexander. And they came and they are spearheading a beautification project on our campus. And I'm out of time. Are there any questions?
I have my doctorate.
Um, yes. I was wondering if you could speak to the drop in reading growth for the bottom twenty-five percent. To what do you attribute it and what do we do to get it back up?
Yes, sir. I think, well, I know what attributed to it, as some of my colleagues have previously stated. A lot of ours are with our novice staff. I have twenty-six teachers on staff. There are nine content area teachers. Of those nine content area teachers, seven of those teachers are one-year, first-year teachers who are on a first-year or one-year license. We have worked hard with building their capacity, and they are improving drastically. But at that point, we were in the process of really just trying to revamp things, building their capacity, ensuring that they had content knowledge and contextual knowledge of what they were to teach the scholars. So we provided different types of supports in place of that. We also moved from being self-contained, and we're now departmentalized, and I do see that that is impacting us in a positive way. So with just a little bit more time, I do believe that that's going to be exactly what we've needed to actually, to curtail some of those decreases.
And I apologize. Can you describe the difference between departmentalized and self-contained?
Self-contained means that the students in third, fourth, and fifth grades, they receive all of their content, their instruction in reading, math, science, social studies. All of those subjects are taught by one teacher.
Okay.
When they're departmentalized, there's one teacher for math, one for all the content areas.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for your work.
I would just ask a question following up based on our other questions concerning the, the school closures and the mergers. You had mentioned that your students that have come to you newly this year have seemed to have had issues with their behavior. Do you attribute that to the move itself or to changing culture and new expectations at your school versus their old school? Or is there something else at play?
I think both of those play a very large role in the children's matriculation into Wilkins. A lot of it, you know, the cultures were totally different. I can only speak about Wilkins culture. It took my entire first year, well, the half year that I was interim, and then the entire last year, to build the culture, to get norms in place and those systems in place. So the students there were accustomed to that because I run a very tight ship. So they were accustomed to that. Not saying that the previous school did not, but things are different at Wilkins, so they had to comply with those things. We did do, at the beginning of the year, I did meet, we received thirty-seven students. And so I met with them because I didn't want them to feel like we're, that we're Wilkins and they're Wolver Heights because we are one cohesive unit. And I met with them and discussed some of the things, and I, that, their expectations with them. And I think that once I did that, they, there was buy-in because I do feel that they felt that they were outliers, that they weren't a part of our school. And I wanted them to know that, you know, we welcome them and we are one. And I never say Wolver Heights students or Wilkins students, we're all Wilkins students.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more questions?
No, this has been very helpful.
Thank you.
Dr. Merritt, are those all of our principals? Area Four.
Yeah, last but not least, Dr. Blake from Area Four. She's the only school from Area Four tonight.
I might have a question for Dr. Merritt, just explanation.
I know it's late in the evening and the sun has gone down. But not before Watkins Elementary has an opportunity to share with you on tonight. So we bid you a great evening on behalf of Watkins Elementary School. I am the leading learner of Watkins Elementary and do want to take a personal privilege to acknowledge you, Dr. Hairston, the entire board, as well as Dr. Green, as well as members of Team We, that's members of my team who have been with me all day, and they're still here with me. So I gotta take them in. I probably have to take them out to eat Friday. And my mama is in the building. I got to, I got to acknowledge my mama. That's a part of my personal village that's working together with us each and every day to make it work. I started my clock so I can make sure I stay on task. But I would like to say that Watkins Elementary, Elementary School is currently an F-rated school with two hundred and sixty-five points, which is four points from a D. Our goal has been for the last three years has been C-school status that is in our purview. We are confident that we will accumulate the four points that are necessary to become a D-rated school. However, we want to increase our goal to ensure that we meet that C-school level. As you can see from the data that you have in front of you, we have increased from ten, at least ten percentile points upwards to eighteen percentile points in every area from our benchmark one data to our benchmark two data. We attribute those increases from our powerful, passionate team of teachers to include our core classroom teachers as well as our interventionists, our interventionist assistants, our counselor who focuses a portion of her time when the students come on mathematics standards, as well as our librarian and our music teacher who focus a portion of their time on those ELA and language arts standards. At present, we have full implementation in two areas as it relates to SOARs. We do have some long-range goals that we, we do not want to have a fly-by-night operation, as it were. We want to have systemic success. So some of those indicators are long-range goals that we have identified, but we are moving in the right direction. As you can see, our student attendance data has fluctuated. Student attendance as well as teacher attendance, ninety-five percent or higher is always our average daily attendance goal. And our lowest, as you can see, have occurred in January with eighty-eight point two percent. To our chronic absenteeism, our highest point was in the month of January as well, and you can see our teacher attendance data before you. We also are re-establishing, how do I stop this? Dismiss. Okay. We are also establishing, re-establishing our PTA. We are also, we have established a site council. We're hopeful that in the months of April and May, which is that time of year where we do establish our PTA, that we will be able to get some parents on board to be able to carry that charge and make sure that we have active, engaged parents at Watkins Elementary School. And finally, we just want to continue, to continue to make strides, always remembering that behind every data point is a person. It's a child or it's a teacher. So we want to make sure that we always put people first and then get back to business as soon as possible.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there questions?
Questions?
Yes, it was great to see increases in every single category in this, at Watkins. What, so the last goals we got are in growth for reading. So what's your strategy to get those to the target to hit the three-thirty C goal?
Well, one strategy, this year, we have teachers in place. Teacher retention, which is also one of our Mississippi SOARs goals that we are aggressively, that is a challenge for us that we're aggressively trying to meet. So on last year, we either had a teacher on FMLA or no teachers in a particular grade level. We did begin last year with only one third-grade teacher at the onset of the school year. So that has been a challenge. We have to have a teacher in front of the children to provide high-quality, effective instruction to make the difference. But in, in lieu of those challenges that we face, we still have dedicated persons as, as those that I have made mention of today, which is just a remnant, which is just a remnant of the talented team of people that we've assembled that work together on a daily basis to help us reach those goals. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, representing Watkins and your team to, we know it's tough to be in the building in place on point at seven o'clock in the morning, if not earlier, and then to still be here tonight. We just appreciate all of our principals and the work you do. It is not easy, and we support you and are just glad to hear your good news and are working alongside you for the more difficult tasks. Dr. Green, Dr. Merritt, all of our principals and superintendents, which is very helpful info. We appreciate your dedication.
Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Dr. Merritt, I do have one quick question. I'm pleased, I, these are new, this is new format, and it's consistent with all the principals reporting, so that's very helpful. And this is the MDE form and format that we're using now.
Yes, ma'am. And it's a form that's located in SOARs.
Great.
Which is the platform where they assess, we heard them talk about their indicators, and as outlined in the executive summary, there are four domains that these indicators fall under, and they assess those indicators based on how they're aligned in the domains.
I noticed that we, we received twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen data as well in this report. And one of the indicators said regarding per people expenditure. We're going to be able to get that by school, apparently. It says it's forthcoming in twenty-nineteen.
Yes, ma'am. So that's an ESA requirement, and that will be on the, reported on the report card, on each school's report card. And actually, if you look at the school report cards now, and I think they may be enclosed in there, it does state how much we're spending per child on the ESA report card.
That's great. I just, it's very helpful to have this kind of information.
And one other thing that I did want to note, of course, with the vision of Dr. Green and the support of the board, there are several schools, all schools currently rated D and F were afforded the opportunity for an after-school program. They may operate Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and some may have decided that they want it to at Saturday. So this opportunity, if schools were not, did not have the funds in their budget, at the district level through federal programs, schools were afforded an opportunity to have an after-school program to help support them in their progress and success for this upcoming year.
So tell me more about that. So some schools will have funding through your office to operate. to operate summer and after-school programming for this summer and upcoming new year, school year.
Yes, ma'am. So as they develop their Title I, their school-wide plans with their Title I budget, some schools allocate based on their needs assessment, a summer program and/or an after-school program. One thing, in order to just provide equity across the board, Dr. Green saw a need for it and so all schools were afforded the opportunity. And of course, I think, did, some, transportation's being sponsored with private funds. So that's how we were able to make this happen for schools who did not budget that or did not have the funds to do so, but will have an opportunity to provide after-school for their scholars.
I'd like to learn more about that and hopefully some of our award-fibered schools are interested in doing that. For sure, if not, if it's too late for this summer.
It's taking place now. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, that's a great opportunity. I know Mr. Figures was interested in doing some summer and after-school year-round work in his award. So I'm very interested to learn more and if it's too late to think some things through for this summer and fall, I want to get started for next year. Because there's so much more we could be doing in summer and after-school, I believe.
Certainly.
And one other thing, I'm really excited about seeing and hearing more principals share their re-engagement with the PTA and their parent outreach because this is very exciting. And the board really supports the district's efforts in this area.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, principals. Get some rest. We might be here another hour. Go home. I hope not. Oh, my agenda, okay. Ms. Miller, where are we? Consent Agenda Items Finance.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Harrison, Dr. Green, members of the board. I present to you four items for your approval on the Consent Agenda Items Finance. Item A is the ratification of accounts payable in activity funds from February twentieth through March the first. Item B is approval of the Sixteenth Section Rent Adjustment between JPS and Valver Singh and Jaswinder Carr, which for a building located at, a business located at two-one-four Terry Road. Item C is approval of donations. And item D is approval of various bids. Bids number three, three-zero-eight-eight for Lee Elementary, three-zero-eight-nine for Sykes Elementary, and three-zero-nine-oh for Boyd Elementary, all are roof replacements. And this is red, all related to the hailstorm damage claim from two-thirteen, twenty-thirteen.
Great. Thank you so much for that. Board members, do I hear a suggestion that we consider these together?
Dr. Harrison, I've moved that we approve the consent agenda for finance as reported.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the consent agenda items as stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it is passed.
Board members, if I may, under, last year, if you remember, we had some challenges with working with our various insurance policies. And I think as we talked with the board through this process, what we were, what we were really kind of directed to do was to work with Council of Great City Schools to get some suggestions on how we could better shore up our risk management services. And so we have done that. We have worked with Council of Great City Schools and various other school districts around the country that do what we are proposing to do. We have issued requests for qualifications for a insurance broker and consulting services. What this person or this company will do, if it's awarded, will assist the district and the Risk Management Department on evaluating the current policies and exposures that we have, giving us a long-term strategy for addressing the needs of the district as it relates to all of our insurance policies. This is being used in major school districts, Broward County, Cincinnati, Orleans Parish. I specifically worked very closely with Atlanta Public Schools. They have done this very successfully. We have issued this RFQ on, we issued it on Friday. It's due on April fifteenth. And so at that point, this is a professional services contract. This is not for insurance. This is not to solicit insurance. This is just to provide some additional assistance to our Risk Management Department so that we could come up with strategies. I think we've had some challenges in the past of how we've approached our risk management program. As you know, I think we initially had some substantial increases. We need to know how to, how to position the district to adjust to the needs of the district as it relates to all of our insurance coverages, all our insurance policies, what opportunities we may have and this, those type of opportunities. So this RFQ has been issued. It was issued on Friday. It is, there is a period for questions from April first through the fifth. The only person that is to be contacted, there is a restriction of contact. Again, this was recommended by Council of Great City Schools, is that Attorney Shepherd be the person of contact. So I do have copies for your review so you will know that what, what is included here. Again, this is not a bid, so it's not necessarily based on pricing. There are other mechanisms in place. But we will be reviewing if we receive any responses. But we will reviewing those responses with an evaluation team. I've also been in contact with people from the Department of Insurance to assist us in this. We are one of the, probably the only school district in Mississippi that is approaching it this way. But you charged us with coming up with solutions to help better position the district. And we think this is the best way. So I did want you to know that that is out. Again, Attorney Shepherd is the only point of contact from Friday until the point that it is recommended to the board. So I do have copies for you. I'll leave those for Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Madam Chief, let me understand what just happened.
What Ms. Miller was discussing?
Maybe this suit.
Yeah, Mr. Figures would like a little bit more. I, I thought what she said was.
That we're gonna have, we're putting, I'm just trying to put, now bids to get professional help to be sure that what we are planning to do is sound and of best practice.
Right.
Currently in the field.
We, we currently have insurance. We have insurance and I, as I understand it, that insurance is, those contracts are year-to-year, for the most part. Those are year-to-year. What we don't have contracted for is a service to support us in thinking about how we go after the bids and thinking about how we might even better structure our internal practices as we think about and as we look at and analyze and, and all of that sort of thing. So this request for qualifications is to try to surface and perhaps we continue to work with folks that we've worked with in the past. But the purpose of this RFQ, this request for qualifications, is to get an individual or a company to identify themselves to want to do this kind of professional services work with us, separate and apart from, and maybe later on, also to bring us bids. But the point right now is to identify someone who can help us think clearly, critically about our insurance and what we, what we do going forward, that we don't currently have.
Just let me share, Mr. Figures, when I first joined the board and serving on the Finance Committee, Ms. Miller helped me understand some of her decision-making regarding some insurance issues coming up. I mean, it's, it's a heavy load to have, to make those decisions of what to bring to this board is what makes best sense. And that's way out of my field and just having her kind of talk me through the different things that she and her team were wanging to decide what kind of recommendation to the board just helped me tremendously. So I'm thinking that's kind of what you're doing here is trying to find a.
We're trying to find a professional. Again, someone who, who is much better suited than, at this than I am, or Attorney Shepherd, to give us ideas of what, what we can do, what we can possibly change and restructure. One of the areas that we had some challenges in, and I'll just name one of our losses, back in twenty-thirteen when the hailstorm claim came, we had a very protracted conversation initially with our insurance company about what was covered, what wasn't covered, what was required. And we were relying on basically us and having to hire professionals to come in. And if you have a professional person in place, they can help you structure those type of, those type of insurance policies. They can help you represent those when you have claims of that nature. So this person, as I understand it, especially in Atlanta, has provided a lot of support around what type of coverage do you need? It's kind of like when you look at your car and you look at car insurance and you get a hundred thousand, three hundred, a hundred. Do you really need that? Or do you need something else?
A real estate broker.
Correct, a real estate broker.
As you go out shopping for your home, you know, you can go out on your own and, and, you know, eventually pay some fees when it's time to close or you can have someone to help you to, to think about what is it that you said that you need? What do I know about you and your family and your needs for a home and amenities and that sort of thing? Price range, all those things. Someone to support you in thinking about the decision that you will later make. And, and Ms. Miller just noted this, but I want to underscore as we continue to raise our expectations for how we use our dollars and how decisions are made, we want to continue to look out around the field, around the country, for how districts, us being the only, really the only large urban in this state, we want to look at other large urban districts for how they are making decisions, how they're structuring themselves and how they're supported with these kinds of decisions that are, that's not our sweet spot. That insurance is not our core work. And so we want to make sure that we're positioning ourselves to make smart decisions going forward, even if sometimes those smart decisions are contrary to decisions we've made in the past. And we don't want to do that haphazardly. If we want, if we need, or determine that we need to make a decision that departs from how we've behaved in the past, we want to make sure that that is supported by folks who do this work. And you'll likely see that in other areas of our work going forward.
Uh, no, sir, I'm sorry. We appreciate you, but we're, we can't entertain comments from the floor. So what Ms. Miller has presented for us is her request for qualifications to receive, to consider who we might want to use to help us think this through. So this is, she's just getting us some information ahead of the game as we're receiving ideas from professionals.
Correct. And it is qualifications, again, it's not a bid. And at that point, if, if the evaluation comes forward, that there's no one that we feel is going to be able to assist us in this area, we may end up doing something else. But we have had challenges in the past with this. And we, again, as Dr. Green said, we need professionals to come in and look at our entire program, not just insurance policies, but how we handle insurance, how we handle claims, how we handle the structure of our department. And that is what this person may do if we recommend that.
And we didn't vote on this tonight. We didn't, this is not included in any of our voting. But I remember when the board was first seated before you joined us. And I appreciate this new practice. Sometimes board members wouldn't find out that bids were out in the community because we hadn't read the advocate of the link yet. So it's helpful to know ahead of time when these things are going out to the public. So just that we were being informed.
And you mentioned that the point of contact for this will be Attorney Shepherd?
Correct.
And that's just to what, keep it confidential?
Just to keep everybody honest and keep all the, all the questions, all the questions and all the concerns would go to one person. And then one person will address those concerns and/or questions to everyone. It's also been posted, this RFQ has been posted on our website. It's also been provided to Mississippi Development Authority. So we felt it best, and again, talking with Council of Great City Schools and specifically Atlanta, that you have one point of contact so that everybody has the same response. Everybody gets the same question answered in the exact same way. And there's no ambiguity about what I may say or Attorney Shepherd may say or someone else. So that's just one of the best practices. And we've done this before. It's, it's just the best practice so that there are no ambiguities about one person hearing something differently than another.
Right, trying to be open and transparent and accountable. And so this will close, these receiving proposals will close on what date?
April fifteenth.
April fifteenth. And when would the board expect to hear?
We hope early May. Again, we are engaging some officials from the Department of Insurance to help us with this process and taking some leadership and some assistance from Council of Great City Schools as well.
Does that help, Mr. Figures?
Yes, somewhat.
Well, we're about right there together.
Are there, are there other questions that you want to ask about it?
After I look over these.
Okay, okay.
Maybe you and I can take that up.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Dr. Cormac, approval agreement between the Children's Museum Read to Succeed Program and JPS.
Great. Good evening, Dr. Harrison, Dr. Green, members of the board. I present tonight for your consideration a MOU from the Mississippi Children's Museum, Read to Succeed Program. It is a one-week camp, June seventeenth through the twenty-first, for fifty of our elementary scholars in JPS who have failed the MAP E-L-A portion. As part of the Literacy-Based Promotion Act, students are required to take a high-stakes reading test in order to promote to fourth grade. And there's a shifting bar for passage this year. And so this is a continued partnership, an effort that is funded through a grant that the Mississippi Children's Museum has received. They bear the cost and provide concierge service to our students, pick them up at home, take them to the museum. And it has a really good data track record. So last year, fifty-five percent of our students that participated in the Read to Succeed Summer Program did pass the test. And these are students who have failed the exam twice prior to the summer. So as part of the Literacy-Based Promotion Act, they get three bites at the apple. This is their final attempt, fifty-five percent passage rate for those scholars who are in high need of supports.
Thank you, Dr. Cormac. I have only a comment and a couple of questions. I think this is a great program. Anybody working with us to help us is good. Fifty-five percent of our students who participated did pass on their third try. Is that what you shared? How many students total participate in this program, do you know?
So as of last summer, we had forty scholars that participated in the program. They had the space and capacity to, and the grant funding to accommodate fifty. We've had conversations, Dr. Green and I, with the President, Susan Gerard, and Monique Ely. Monique is here in the back and she can help to entertain questions. We appreciate you for being here and a great partner. They are able to accommodate beyond the fifty if we so identify those students. And given the elevated passage rate that's now required, students are required to attain a pass or three in order to succeed. For now, we do anticipate that there will be some students that fall into that category and we'll look for all partners and comers to help.
Well, that's very good news to hear that we can increase our number of students. And do we have any sense of the principals, the schools that are taking advantage of this program?
Well, we will, we will garner the data. Part of our, our work is to identify students. But we won't have that data readily available until mid-May after the students have had a second attempt at passage on the exam.
And not that we need it tonight, but it would be interesting to know the schools that participated last summer.
Yes, ma'am, I can get that data.
And how that might have impacted the principals' thinking or the work of the school teachers, something like that.
Great.
Thank you.
Just anecdotally, is, am I recalling correctly that Span is a school that?
We cast a bright, a wide net, but Span has ongoing partners, partnership programs with the district. Ms. Torrey has taken advantage of many of the offerings, given the proximity to the museum and, and a willingness to participate.
Thank you for joining us tonight and we appreciate your work, Ms. Torrey. I saw you in the video.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Dr., do we need to, yeah, excuse me. Board members, do I hear a move, motion to approve this item from Dr. Cormac with the partnership with New Children's Museum?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the item passes. Dr. Green, items A and B?
And, oh, so just A and B. So I can speak, I'll speak to A and B and. Uh, so I can speak, I'll speak to A and B and, um, Ms. Miller will speak to C and Ms. Lyons, D. I don't know if you want to, I can just start now.
Or you can do all of them?
I'll start now, A and B. Uh, so I am, uh, we're bringing to the board, uh, tonight for approval, um, position descriptions that fall within the new, um, uh, uh, organization chart. Um, attached, uh, and you've had an opportunity to review, uh, six leadership positions that will be significantly revised or, or newly created effective July one, two thousand nineteen. These positions are largely focused on our efforts to transform teaching and learning in Jackson Public Schools and begin to provide the structures needed for great, uh, for greater effectiveness and alignment to the needs of the, of the district. Uh, these revised or new positions included in the, um, are included in the proposed organizational chart um, that is also being presented to the board for, uh, review and approval this evening. Uh, the revised positions include the Executive Director of Data and Accountability, uh, Executive Director of Public Engagement, the direct, Executive Director of Culture and Wellness, and the Executive Director, Director of Teaching and Learning. Um, and the newly created positions, um, we've added an Assistant Superintendent to, uh, serve, especially to serve elementary schools, as well as a Chief Talent Officer. We created this fifth Assistant, um, Superintendent role to allow us to provide adequate supervision and support to schools uh, by reducing the portfolio of schools, uh, that they have and that they serve. Uh, while we propose that the Chief Talent Officer role and position be created now, uh, we will not include this position in the, uh, school year nineteen twenty budget and therefore do not plan to fill the role for this upcoming year. We believe there is a great need for this role in JPS, uh, but we want to focus on fortifying our teaching and learning efforts first and building towards a stronger talent strategy to transform the district over time. Should also note that all of the Executive Directors and Assistant Superintendent positions will be compensated in alignment with the proposed salary range, uh, for that group, and you'll hear about that in a moment. The Chief Talent Officer would be compensated with, uh, within the, the salary range of the executive team members. And I brought that, you'll recall, back in, uh, February to the board. I'll take any questions, uh, first on the, um, position descriptions.
Thank you. Board members, do you have questions or comments for Dr. Green? We received this material early.
My only comment would be that I'm glad to see this moving forward. It's an exciting time for Jackson Public Schools and appreciate the work and effort and thought that you and your team have put into helping us begin this process of transforming this district.
Thank you.
Uh, I too would like to say that, um, in reviewing the materials and looking at the vision that you and your team have outlined, uh, even in the language of the position description speaks dramatically to what this board totally supports you around and seeing to the needs of our children and our families now. And I think it brings all of us to a healthier and, uh, more productive place for us as colleagues to do the work that we must do to support our children, our students, their families, our staff across the board. And I also think it'll help us operationally to, uh, make some improvements. So I, I appreciate you and your senior, uh, your executive leadership, the top tier, and your, uh, senior leadership. Um, it, it really bodes well, and just kudos to all of you for your work here.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Do I hear, um, any other board members' questions or comments?
Madam President, if you don't mind, um, I'm, I'm happy to talk through the org chart as well, just so that you have, um, all of that together. So, um, also presented to the board tonight for, um, review and approval, um, is the proposed organizational chart, uh, that would take effect July one, two thousand nineteen. This revised organizational structure provides for greater alignment of the leadership and talent to the needs of the district, um, as we've seen and heard from the community and, um, from various reports. And focuses on transforming our teaching, especially on transforming our teaching and learning teams. Listed, uh, below are some of the, the key shifts, uh, accomplished in this, um, proposed new structure. And I'll, I'll outline those now. Uh, to discontinue, uh, um, I'm sorry, to amend the, the job title and responsibilities of the Executive Director of Public and Media Relations, um, to the, uh, Executive Director of the Public Enga- of Public Engagement, basically expanding that role, um, engaging across all, all groups, and not simply responding to, um, media issues. Um, amending the job title and responsibilities of the Executive Director of Research and Accountability to the Executive Director of Data and Accountability, shifting the supervisory and responsory, uh, responsibilities of that role to the Deputy Superintendent for Academics, from the Deputy Superintendent for Academics, which where it currently is now, to the, the Chief of Staff. Want to make sure that that, uh, role around research, or I'm sorry, around, uh, data and accountability, which is the new role, that that sits within the Chief of Staff, um, house and team, which is largely the, the keeper and the, uh, champion for, uh, the strategic, strategic plan that we're developing. They, uh, our Chief of Staff and that team will help us to keep our eyes on where we are uh, in terms of that strategic plan, where we are in terms of our, uh, performance over time, our accountability, the accountability, the state's accountability model, and eventually our own indicators of success. So repositioning that data and accountability, accountability role to that team, uh, we believe made sense. Also amending the job title and responsibilities of the ED of Student Support Services uh, to the ED, Executive Director of Culture and Wellness, to enlarge the focus on culture, uh, positive behavior intervention, uh, systems, social and emotional supports, counseling, nursing and health. So looking at all things, um, all of the aspects of what it means for a young person to be happy and healthy and whole in our schools and ready to learn, housing all of that in one office, um, so that there, there will likely be all kinds of synergies and, and, um, uh, supports between our counseling team, for example, and, and those who are doing the, um, the work around social emotional learning or PBIS, supporting that throughout the district. Um, we want to make sure that those are coupled with, um, the work, the, the current work of the students', uh, support services that, um, often focuses more on, um, student behaviors and discipline. There's still a role for that, this, that's still hugely important. We want to couple those, see those as two sides of the same coin so that we're not simply looking at what do we do once a student has made a bad choice, but how do we help them to make many more positive choices? Um, and again, to build that, um, greater collaboration through those teams. Um, also want to create additional, an additional Assistant Superintendent, uh, position to provide the adequate supervision and support to schools. We're looking to, um, excuse me, currently we have, um, our schools located within feeder patterns. And I know, or I understand, at some point in the past, we had, um, implemented the, um, uh, divisions for, for, um, school leadership and support. We do want to go back to a, a division, um, structure where we have someone who's dedicated to support our high schools and, and, um, alternative schools, someone who's dedicated to support our middle schools, someone who's dedicated, and three people, dedicated to support, um, groups of the elementary schools. The, the goal there, one, is to ensure that the time that we pull those school leaders out of the office, that they're with other folks who are dealing with curricular issues, um, behavior types of issues, uh, staff development issues, parent engagement, et cetera, um, in, in the same ways or along those, the same lines. Those, those issues seem, tend to, um, behave and are experienced very differently from elementary to middle and from middle on to high. And currently to have principals sitting in an, um, in a feeder pattern, uh, meeting with their, with their, um, supervisor is a challenge for those, well, for everyone to differentiate on all the needs within that room. Um, because we know not, two high schools are not built the same, let alone a high school in the middle and an elementary. So we do want to make sure that we're thoughtful about the, the continued development of the school leaders, but as well, um, how we message what is most important, where we want to place our big bets around curriculum and instruction, teaching and learning, where we're placing our bit, big bets around, uh, messaging for students and, um, meeting their social and emotional needs, um, and any out, outside or external supports, or, or even internal supports that are, are brought to bear one, on those schools in a particular division. We want to make sure that those conversations that they have are most impactful, most focused, um, and that we can drive towards success, uh, using that structure. Um, we do know and recognize, and I should say this, we do know and recognize that there's a need for conversations, alignment, uh, what we call vertical alignment from middle, or, or elementary to middle to high. And so we'll have to create those opportunities for leaders, uh, to have discussions, especially within a feeder pattern. We need to have relationships between them, um, especially as we continue to build out programming that's articulated, um, uh, from elementary to middle to high. But we know that the, the greater focus right now and need is to have them, um, structured in these divisions. We also want to, um, want to merge, uh, the curriculum and professional development departments into a single Office of Teaching and Learning. Um, and this would, this would help us to, one, see that all of the work around teaching and learning as one, help us to, um, ensure that the folks who have really deep content knowledge, uh, whatever the content might be, that, that those folks are both a part of helping us to understand what the curriculum is and any gaps that we might need to fill in the curriculum, understanding that there's never going to be, uh, a curricular program that just meets all of our needs completely. And so with that, um, we want to make sure that folks with that deep knowledge are able to help us to identify any gaps that exist within the curriculum, and especially as we compare the curriculum to our state, state standards, to help to fill those gaps, but also to develop the capacity of our leaders and teachers in, in moving that curriculum into what kids experience in classrooms. Um, right now, as two separate teams, um, you know, the, the collaboration isn't always there, there's some. Um, and, you know, it's, it, they're not built right now for that level of give and take, of collaboration and, and synergy. And so we want to really intentionally create that um, so that, uh, we see a, a continuation of what's written in the curriculum and what actually happens in classrooms, the, the taught curriculum. So, and so that's merging those two teams. Um, we also want to amend the, the job title and, and responsibilities of the Deputy Superintendent of Academics to become the Chief Academic Officer. In this role, not only will they oversee and, and support and manage, um, all of the kind of curricular PD, um, external to school work that is, that often sits here in central office, they will also supervise the area superintendents. So you see in our, um, um, in the proposed, um, position description that the, uh, Chief Academic Officer would support all teaching and learning. It's both what, what we experience and, and the supports that we provide from the central office, as well as the supervision of, um, of schools with the, uh, area superintendents. This is a pretty important decision that we've gone to. We contemplated continuing to have, uh, um, say, a Chief of Schools, a role that I've played in, in a previous district, uh, supporting and managing the area superintendents in one division or team, and in a totally different team, the, uh, Chief Academic Officer to support the, the curricular, professional development, special education, all of those kinds of roles. We married those two, and it's a pretty big team, but we married those two because there again, we want to force the collisions. We want to force the, the opportunities for folk, those folks to talk about what is working well. Hey, let's continue to do that, let's make sure everyone's doing that, or adapting that, you know, to their needs, or this thing right here isn't working so well. We don't have enough, um, uh, we haven't focused enough on teaching fractions, or whatever it might be. Um, and so by marrying those teams, we can, um, we're, we're intentionally driving towards, um, greater alignment, greater, um, clearer messages on what's expected, um, in teaching and learning and what's actually happening on the ground. So we can see that where we intended in our planning for a support to alleviate some of the challenges and pressures that teachers might have, we start to see where it doesn't actually alleviate it, it adds to their stress and their, um, um, their workload. And so we can start to make those kinds of shifts, um, more real-time. And it doesn't take a full year of, of hearing that the lesson plans are too long or the, whatever it is, the, the feedback that we've gotten from, from our teachers or, or even from our school leaders. So lots of thought has gone into marrying these two. As I said, it's big work, um, but we're convinced that this is the way to ensure that, um, what we intend actually gets done, and then that what is done informs what we intend and what we do going forward, that continuous loop. So I talked about the Chief Academic Officer. Um, and just again, uh, to, to note, the Chief Talent Officer, we've, we've, we're asking you to approve this position and, um, to have it as one of the cabinet members, um, in our organization. Uh, we're mindful of the size of the, uh, central office. We're mindful of the number of senior and executive team members. We're mindful of our current enrollment, um, and even the trends that we've seen in enrollment. And so, um, at this point, we, we don't believe it's appropriate to, um, uh, to fund and to hire for this role. But we do want to signal that, especially given the current situations that you heard from several of our principals, we, we've got to do really strategic, big work on developing talent here in this district, recruiting new talent to this district and to this city, um, and loving those folks to the extent that they want to stay with us, so keeping them. So that's all big work that we've got to do. And it's, um, we've got to move from, um, the really important, yet transactional work that happens in, in most human resource offices, where we process, um, new hires and process, you know, um, uh, licensures and et cetera, et cetera. That's all really important work. But it's woefully inadequate as we think about the kind of staffing and talent that we've got to, uh, amass and retain if we're going to start to see some of the gains that we really want to see in our schools. And so I can't say enough about the need for that, and yet, we're mindful of where we are fiscally. And so we've stopped short of, of funding, um, and, and hiring for that. But I do want to, um, I, I, I do want and need your, your support in acknowledging that that's an important thing. And as we continue forward, we need to keep looking at our enrollment and, you know, where we might be able to, uh, afford the position. I'll pause there and see if there are any questions about the org chart or the positions that we've presented.
Thank you, Dr. Green, that was very helpful. Uh, board members, do you have any questions or comments for Dr. Green? Do I hear a motion to approve all four items under Consent Agenda Item Personnel, Items A, B, C, and D?
Hold on one second.
Oh, what's wrong?
You want to, you want to hear about, um, V and D?
C and D.
C.
I mean, C and D, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, I thought you did C. Oh, but you're, I guess you didn't really speak to D. Did you do well? Yes, we are wanting to hear whatever you would like to share, Dr. Green.
Why don't I propose this? If, if Ms. Miller can, uh, speak to C, then those are the issues or the items related to the reorg.
Right.
And then the, uh, personnel matters, Ms. Lyons can speak to.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, again, Dr. Green, Dr. Harrison, board members. This is continuing now as we continue, as we start working to streamline our system, streamline our, our salary structures. We have a number of steps, uh, our salary scales, A through Q or P or R, some letters. And so this, this action is continuing what we did at last board meeting. And so this, this action is continuing what we did at last board meeting, to continue to streamline the positions and have a one salary scale so that these categories of, of folks will be on the scale. This is not new money, this is the beginning rate for what the Executive Director already makes, and then the 120 is the high of the others. So it's just combining scales into one salary schedule for this level of employee.
Right. And, yeah. I, I understand, it makes sense. I have a minor question, but I'll be, it's not worth picking up now. Board, do you have any questions for Ms. Miller? Okay, Ms. Lyons, item D?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Green, Dr. Harrison, members of the board. On behalf of the administration, I ask for the approval of staff, the approval of staff personnel matters as listed in board material.
Thank you, Boyd. Have questions or comments regarding the personnel matters?
I'd just like to say, Dr. Harrison, Dr. Green, I appreciate getting all this material in, well in advance of the meeting tonight and having the opportunity to ask questions of you and sit down, understand it. Again, I echo my colleague's sentiments about just the enthusiasm we have for supporting this work as we go forward.
Thank you. Do I now hear a motion from the board to approve Consent Agenda Items 11, A, B, C, and D as presented?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, all four Consent Agenda Items under Personnel have passed. Board, do we have other business? Board, do I hear a consideration to hold an executive session? Thank you, Ms. Attorney Shepherd.
Sounds like a yes.
Quietly whispered, yes. Okeydoke.
Madam Chair, I'm moved that we close the meeting to consider holding an executive session.
Do I hear a second it to close the meeting to consider holding an executive session?
Second.
A reluctant one.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we will close the meeting to consider holding an executive session. Thank you so much, public, for joining us. We appreciate your support and good work, and our team members.